All right, thank you all for coming out. This is the regular board meeting of the school district 25. It is August 12th, 2021. I call this meeting to order. Let's note the roll and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the great oath of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming. It's nice to see everyone eager to get school started. I know my kids are very, very eager. We're going to move on to our third item here with facilities management. And this is a resolution to extend Alder Roofing contract.
Mr. President.
Yes, Anisha.
I recommend that the Board of Education adopts the resolution extending the contract of Jay Adler Roofing beyond 30 days and delegating limited authority to the Director of Facilities Management to grant further extensions should supply chain delays continue.
All right, thank you, Anisha. Do I have a second motion?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. And let's go to Ryan Schultz.
Good evening. This is for the Thomas Roofing Project that was awarded earlier this year. Due to supply chain disruptions throughout the construction industry and specifically in the roofing industry, the contractor was unable to get a specialty fastener that's needed for the project. We went out and looked as well through various vendors and other roofing suppliers, and the fastener is not available on the market. So due to that, the vendor was not able to meet the substantial completion date of the project. In the contract, there is some relief options for the vendor based on the supply chain issue that was incurred. So that is why we're looking to extend the project beyond the substantial completion date that was outlined. So right now, we're looking to extend it till September 30th, 2021. And after that, the resolution will also give me some authority for right now, any extension beyond 30 days, the board needs to approve. So just so we don't have to keep coming back if the supply chain issue keeps incurring, that to take that off your plate for a little while, that I would be able to extend their contract every 30 days if that keeps happening. So it is a zero dollar cost. We did hear some indications this week that they may have located the fastener. So we may be able to get this project in yet this fall. So we're looking to get that done. So that is what the resolution is outlining.
All right. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Ryan, just a quick question. The, or sorry, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
So what's so special about this fastener? I mean, it's a roof.
Yeah, I would agree. That would be like you think it's a fastener. The different thing on some of our schools, because they're older, it's a gypsum deck. So this material is like softer and more brittle. So the fastener has to be specialty made. It's made specifically to adhere into gypsum substrate, where typically a newer roof would adhere into steel or concrete. So that's the difference is it's a gypsum-based deck that needs a specialty fastener to apply. It's pretty common in schools across the U.S., but the fastener is different based on that condition.
Sorry, Mr. President. So maybe more toward Lori. So why would we go and just do the extensions? Why not just, why do we need the resolution? Is there, is it provide flexibility? Is it provide, you know, why wouldn't maybe we just go rebid it when the product is available? We're heading into winter, it's school disruption?
Yeah, I believe it's our best interest at this point. It's based on market conditions that if we would go out to rebid, we're not guaranteed that another vendor would have been able to locate it or we'd get a better price just on price escalation than since March. So again, we do, it's a shorter project. It's not a huge project. So the overall duration is approximately three to four weeks. So that's why we feel that it's still advantageous to extend the contract at zero dollars and try to complete it yet this fall.
Any other comments? All right, let's take it to a vote. Lana, if you could call roll.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Moving on. Thank you, Ryan, for that. Moving on, crossing guard locations. This is one of my favorites because they're always out there and doing a great job. This is an action item, so do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Anisha.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve crossing guard locations as presented for the 2021-22 school year.
Do a second. Thank you, Chad. This one is Stacy Malik.
Yes, thank you. We bring this to the board every year just to go over our crossing guard location placements on an annual basis. We do meet each year in the spring with the Village of Arlington Heights as they provide the funding for all crossing guards for District 25 and discuss any requests to consider additional locations for crossing guards. Requests can be submitted through building, school building administrators if parents have concerns about certain corners locations, as well as coming, going to the village or coming to the school district. We do review each location based on certain criteria, such as number of students crossing in a certain amount of time, whether or not there are traffic signals or stop signs, et cetera, at corners, as well as vehicular traffic and speed at various locations. We had not received any requests for additional locations. So we are recommending to maintain the same locations that were in existence last year. As the board is aware, we do have four locations on the list. Our lowest qualifying are the locations that have the lowest score based on the criteria I mentioned that remain unstaffed. We're unable to find individuals to take those positions. Within the last couple of weeks, we now have three additional locations that have become vacant. So we are continuing in the process to try to staff those locations. But if we are unable to staff them, we continue to move guards so that the locations that have the highest qualifying points continue to be staffed and the locations that have the lower number of points would not be staffed. So we do work with the village and post crossing guard locations, ask the village to post it, as well as through our personnel department to try to recruit staff. We also put email out in our, messages out in our school newsletters for parents if they are able and willing to take on that responsibility, as well as any of our part-time staff that might otherwise be available during the times that we have crossing guards if they want to take on that extra responsibility. But it is something that we too are, especially this year, struggling to find staff to fill all of our locations.
Thank you, Stacy.
Mr. President.
Yes, Brian.
So Stacy, given that, and this is kind of, some of this happened last year as well, right? So given that there's a couple of spots where we, you know, we have to just prioritize and if we have a staffing gap, are we looking at signage or any other alternative to at least supplement when we can't have a physical body be in place? And how realistic is that to scale?
So that's something that would actually be in the hands of the village because these locations are not on school district property. They are throughout the Arlington Heights community. Any signage requests would have to be accommodated through the village. As I said, we do review locations with them and we'll work with them to see if that might be an option. We do have guards at locations where there are stop signs that may be heavily trafficked, heavily student during that before-school, after-school window, have a lot of students crossing, where it may be a four-way stop and just for additional safety purposes, we do have guards at those corners. Those corners would be more likely, again, depending on how the criteria all scores out, could be those corners that are more likely to have lower points. And then we'd have to move guards to locations where perhaps
Right.
there aren't cross signals.
So we don't have any temporary signage flexibility to put something up?
We don't, and we actually don't even have the ability to, other than to simply cross individuals. Like, we can't even have our staff direct traffic. We've been communicated by the village that that is the responsibility of the police department, not of the school district. So putting any signage off of district property would not be something that we could do.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just have a quick question. Stacy, since we have this amazing community watching and hopefully it will read the notes, if somebody is interested in that position, where could they look into applying?
There are, all the positions are posted on the district website. I believe it's under the Personnel Department, job postings, along with every other position we have. Or they could reach out to Laura Camastro in my office. She kind of oversees all of the crossing guards in the district.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Lana, if you could call the roll, take a vote.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. I'm looking forward to getting hollered at as I cross the street because I always seem to do something wrong. They did. Guards are awesome. They're looking out for our kids' safety. That's wonderful. Every year, dedicated to in the cold and everything. We move on to serious safety hazard resolution for 2021-22. This is another action item.
Mr. President?
Yes, Anisha.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution to continue serious safety hazard busing for the 2021-22 school year.
Thanks, Anisha. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Stacy, again.
Yes, thank you. Again, an annual item that the board is asked to vote on. The school code allows the school district to transport students who live over a mile and a half from school or within a serious safety hazard-approved location to access busing at no cost. And the school code provides that we annually review those locations and certify to the state that the hazards remain unchanged. So we did not have any new requests to review any additional sites for hazards. Hazards would be things like having to cross a railroad track, traveling along a high-speed road, 45 miles an hour, something like that. Again, there's a point system. It's all provided by IDOT. So we, the locations, there are 10 of them that have been approved in the district that do meet the IDOT guidelines. So we're asking the board to approve this resolution so that I can submit it to the state as our certification that these hazards still exist.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns, discussion, anything? All right, with that, Lana, please call the roll.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Moving on to our tentative budget for 2021-22. And again, Stacy, you're up to bat. This is just an info item.
Yes, this is an information item. Again, the school code requires that we present the board with a tentative budget at least 30 days prior to asking the board to vote on a final version of the budget, which we will plan to do at the second meeting in September, and post a notice in the newspaper that we will hold a public hearing on that budget, and that notice will go in the paper tomorrow. The budget, this tentative budget will also be posted on the district website for access for the community to review. So in terms of the assumptions going into this year's budget, as the board is aware, our 2020 property tax levy was based on an increase of CPI of 2.3%. And for the 2021 levy that we will discuss later this year, the CPI will be 1.4%. I do anticipate, based on historical data, about a 99% collection rate. And you'll see in this budget that I am reallocating some taxes across funds. For interest income, we continue to see a downward trend. Last year, I had budgeted based on a half a percent, based on investments that we currently have in place. I'm anticipating probably, well, I'm anticipating 0.4% for income. Those investments could be dollars that were invested three months ago. They could be dollars that were invested two years ago, which is why the average, considering that right now, I think the federal funds rate is zero. You would think, why aren't I budgeting zero? But because funds may have been invested when rates were higher, we do still continue to see some interest earnings. Local food service revenues. This year, the National School Lunch Program, we are allowed to claim reimbursement and provide meals to all students for free this year. So I'm not anticipating any local food service revenues from parents other than the program we won for District 26, as they do pay us to provide that service. I'm adding back building rental revenue as we do anticipate having our schools open for some of our programs, such as AHYBA. At this point, I have not included any funds for E-Rate based on the fact that the majority of our funds came from our Comcast Fiber Program, which since we've joined the Do-It Consortium, we have no costs and therefore we have no E-Rate reimbursement. In terms of state funds, our evidence-based funding formula, we will see an increase of about $130,000. For this year, we have now moved from Tier 2 to Tier 3 school district at 94% of adequacy, which is the cause of that additional funding. And in terms of federal funds, this budget includes a significant amount of ESER funds. ESER 1, which was the CARES Act, was included in last year's budget, so it will not be included in the current year. However, ESER 2 and ESER 3, we will, I've included funds in the budget for this year and then we'll see additional funds in the following year. So this chart shows you by fund, the current year, or last year's budget, last year's estimated unaudited actual, and the difference as well as compared to the proposed budget for the current year. You can see in the education fund, last year, we were 1.2 million almost in revenues over budget. That is because of the summer feeding program that we did, where the federal government was reimbursing all of our food service and our food service program brought in over $1.7 million in revenue that we don't usually see and would not have been anticipated in the budget, as well as some of the additional ESER funds from the CARES Act that we weren't aware of at the time of the budget. You can see in the TORT fund, a significant increase of revenue. That is the reallocation of property taxes because I am shifting all of the costs associated with our risk insurance, property liability expenses also into the TORT fund. So I'm offsetting that with the revenue currently, or historically, we've only paid workers' comp out of that fund. I'm moving all of that insurance cost now into that fund. So overall, the anticipated increase budget-to-budget in revenue is 5.8% or $4.7 million. In terms of sources of revenue, this chart just shows more of a breakdown in terms of the type of revenue. So you can see property taxes, 2.8%. Well, 2.3% was the CPI increase. And then we had new property of about 0.6% and then offset by the 1% I anticipate we don't receive in collections. The food service revenue, again, that's that local revenue I discussed that I don't anticipate seeing in this budget. The tuition revenue decrease is the summer school revenue. Because we are funding summer school out of the ESER funds, we're not charging families for it. So I didn't anticipate that in the budget. And then the federal fund significant increase is anticipating the National School Lunch Program reimbursement for meals for the entire year, as well as the additional ESER 2 and ESER 3 funds. And then this chart just provides a breakdown, specifically by type, of the increase or decrease in specific line items budget-to-budget. So historically, property taxes has been the largest portion of our revenue budget. And we've seen property taxes become a greater and greater portion of our budget as state revenues specifically have declined over time. For the current year, because of the influx of the federal money we're going to get, property taxes is actually a slightly lower percent of the budget this year than it was last year. In terms of expenditures included in this plan is a personnel plan approved in the spring where we added about $1 million of staff. Personnel costs are based on our negotiated agreements and/or tied to CPI for non-union employees. We have a cap on our health insurance costs in our negotiated agreements of a 6% increase. I'm not anticipating any kind of pension shift in this budget. And we were informed of a decrease in our IMRF employer pension rate that will take effect January 1st, 2022. We do attempt to budget cost-neutral to the extent possible. We don't do any automatic increases in our budget for inflation. Any increases would really be zero-based, based on actual needs in specific departments for a specific year. Typical tech plan budget is 1.3 million. The budget includes additional tech funds for upgrades to our middle school STEM design and CMA labs. The budget does not include funds this year for COVID. Last year, we had half a million dollars in for all of our various investment mitigation factors. We have a significant supply of masks. We bought the sanitizer units. We bought the cleaning units. So those are all things we own at this point and don't need to make additional investments. The budget does include funds for our DEI initiative of about, total of about $90,000 for curriculum audit for some professional development and for recruitment of staff. Our special ed tuition budget, as the board saw with the NSSEO presentation, is almost a half a million dollars increase based on our current student placements and includes additional students for contingencies as we may have students move in during the year. We are significantly increasing our costs in our food service department, partially because we anticipate with lunches being free to all that sales or participation will increase. Combined with, we're seeing a 15% to 20% cost increase just in foods costs out in the economy. And our bus contract increase includes a 3.5% contract increase plus anticipating a full return to the full number of routes. Year, we did reduce. Thank you, sorry. All right. Additional expenditure anticipations. We'll continue our district vehicle replacement. We are also budgeting to replace all our food service vans this year because with such an influx of food service revenues, we're not supposed to make a profit off of our food service program. So needing to replace our vans and having the revenue to do so made it a good time to make that replacement. As I mentioned, our Comcast contract expired early last year because we joined the consortium. So that cost is removed from the budget. We are anticipating double-digit increases in our risk insurance premiums, both workers' comp and property liability, based on the marketplace and what we've heard from our insurance carriers. That's anticipated in the budget as well. Capital projects, the board had approved an estimated budget plan of 3.9 million, which is included in the budget. We'll continue to make payments on our bond issues that are still outstanding. And then we, as always, have a contingency included in the budget for five teachers, six non-certified staff, specifically TAs, some non-staff items of $100,000 in the ed fund, and then $50,000 in capital projects for those types of emergencies or urgent issues that we aren't aware of but might arise and we would need funds to cover. If we don't have those situations arise, those funds do not get spent. So this chart, similar to the revenue, shows by fund the 2021 budget compared to the 2021 actual. Again, while we had budgeted actually a deficit in expenses last year, we had a surplus mainly because a lot of the costs that we anticipated didn't get fully spent. The money we budgeted for COVID, we didn't spend all of it. Some of our positions, we weren't able to fill. Our buses, even though I budgeted for fewer routes, we didn't run them for the whole year. So just a lot of those types of differences. On the expenditure side, the increase in the education fund budget, we added over, as I mentioned earlier, a million in staff through the personnel plan. We also added about 1.4 million of costs that will be funded through those ESER funds. So we have to put the revenue on the revenue side, but we also have to put the expenses on the expense side. Overall, it's a wash in the budget. The decrease in O&M is mainly because of those COVID-related expenses that were removed from the budget and because I shifted the property liability insurance costs that previously were funded through the O&M fund into the TORT fund for this current year. The transportation, again, the increase is based on the bus transportation contract plus the full number of routes. The IMRF is basically stable because while it's based on increased salaries, our rate is anticipated to decrease in January. And then in life safety, that budget significantly reduced because we only have about $60,000 of work planned for this year. That was in our 10-year life safety survey. So any projects we fund out of life safety have to have been identified either in a life safety amendment or a life safety survey. Again, this is more of a breakdown of type of expenditure by type. Probably the biggest thing I haven't already mentioned and note is our employee benefits. While we have a 6% cap on the cost increases, we are seeing an increase in the number of staff that are accessing our benefits, probably based on what's happening out in the economy. And then similar to revenues, this is the major changes in the expenditure budget by specific types of line items. So as I mentioned, you can see here, salaries in total increased by 1.3 million, even though we added $1 million in staff. That's because of a significant amount of turnover that we saw between last year and this year. Employee benefits, again, increased based on the 6% cap and then the various ESER fund expenditures and other items that I've previously discussed. It's typical in a school district for 80% of your budget to be your personnel costs, salary and benefits. So this chart, because we have debt service and construction, our capital projects are a significant portion of our budget. Our personnel costs appear to be closer to the low 70%. So I always like to show the chart in the bottom. That taking those items out, you can see that our personnel costs are 79%, right in line with the typical 80% for school. line with the typical 80% for school districts. Based on that, this chart shows you our current unaudited fund balances in each of our funds and the impact that the revenue budget and expenditure budgets that I just showed you would have on our projected fund balance. This budget does have a $4.2 million anticipated deficit in the budget. It is a 75% decrease in our total fund balance, which is currently 56.4 million. But that $4.2 million decrease in fund balance, really the majority of that is that $3.9 million of capital projects that we've made the conscious decision to continue to pay for those capital projects out of our general revenues, our fund balance. It's not something that we'll be able to continue to sustain, but we have been doing that for the last couple of years. So as I mentioned, with a total budget deficit of 4.2 million and the construction, the capital projects of four, we really have an operating budget deficit of about 0.2 million, which when you consider the amount of contingency I'm in the budget, we actually have a balanced budget in terms of operating but for our capital projects. And just as a note, last year, we had budgeted a $6.2 million deficit, and we ended up with a $1.8 million deficit overall. So it was a positive $4.4 million. Well, it was a positive impact on the budget of $4.4 million in terms of less of a deficit that we budgeted. This does show you that our fund balance is projected to drop below the 60% mark by the end of this year. So as I said a minute ago, continuing to fund capital projects out of our general funds will continue to deplete that. So it will be something that we'll be bringing to the board for discussion at a later time. And then just as I mentioned at the start, we anticipate bringing the budget to the board for final adoption, the second meeting in September, and we will continue to make changes and update the budget before the final for any changes that are brought to our attention. I know that we still have a number of positions that have not been filled. As those positions get filled, we'll adjust the salary budgets to reflect the actual costs of those individuals as well as the insurance benefits, once we know the selections of all of our new staff.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Any questions, comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian.
Stacy, in prior years, because we're kind of looking at a last year, next year kind of scenario here, in prior years, like off the top of your head, how high was our life safety budget those couple, like I know there was a year we had to do a ton of work.
The last couple of years, I budgeted $200,000. I know this last year was $200,000. The 2015, when we first did the 10-year life safety survey, right after that, it probably would have been the highest amount because we knew we had a lot of projects that we could cover out of the life safety fund.
Do you recall how high, like at a watermark?
I don't.
I don't, just thinking. It just seems like it's gone down the last couple of years. I was just trying to think back. But if you don't know off the top of your head, that's okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Richard.
Stacy, can you just expand on that? Because I'm concerned about the fund balance going down. You said you're going to come back. So is it, you're coming back to talk about it with a plan? You're coming back to bring it back up to 60%? Just expand on that statement that you, what are you coming back with?
Well, so when I do the five-year forecast, which I will do after we adopt the final budget, in the, I think the last time I did one, I did mention or talk to the board about the 60% fund balance level became very important when property taxes, property taxes in Cook County were so delayed that we didn't receive our first, our second installment payments until December. Because then we had to get from, our fund balance is reported as a June 30th. So we had to get from June 30th to December, paying all of our bills on what was in the bank. That's half our year, so we had to have at least 50% fund balance to cover half of our expenses. Plus, we had bond payments. That's where that 60% level came from. Within the last, gee, more than five, six years, Cook County has really gotten more in line with a lot of the other counties where tax bills due, I mean, they're late this year, but it's COVID-related. But they've gotten really in line with having them due on time, where that 60% level, I had mentioned I'd be comfortable going below that. My recommendation would be we don't go below 40% at the lowest end, and somewhere in there is a level that, you know, we'll have to get comfortable with in terms of where the board wants to be. Other than paying for capital projects through general revenues, it would be looking at other options, which may include selling additional bonds as we start paying off some of our bond issues. Two of our current bond issues will pay off in December of 2022. So those could be options to issue additional bonds and just extend that bond tax levy out, so it wouldn't increase the levy, but it would just extend it out additional years. I know also with the Strategic Planning Committee, resources and funding is a part of the conversation of that, so seeing what comes out of that as well. So I guess to answer your question, twofold is determining what is that level of fund balance that the board would be comfortable going to, and then how do we stay above it, which could be a combination of either looking for other options to fund capital projects or looking at adjusting our expenditures to cover the costs of capital projects.
You know, I ask that because I do recall, not too long ago, our fund balance was, you know, closer to 60 million, if I remember correctly.
It's 60 right now. It's closer to 80.
Okay. So you're, but maybe I misread that, but you're projecting, maybe it's the timing of that, maybe I'm just reading it. It's on that one side. I thought you said the fund balance.
By the end of this year.
Oh, okay.
It should go below 60. It's currently at 64.
And you're talking percent, right, Stacy? You're talking percent.
Percent.
Yeah, because I'm talking, yeah, I was looking at more as 58 million.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm talking percent.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, I'm talking dollar.
You have to remember that we had about four years where we also had construction revenue, right? We had revenue that might have been in the budget, but we hadn't spent it because we hadn't finished the addition to a school yet. But so typically, we've tried, we've been just above 60% over the last handful of years.
Okay.
Anything further? All right, thank you, Stacy. Moving on, we have a thank you from the American Heart Association.
I have that. Emily Mulder submitted a, oh, thank you, recognition letter that she wanted me to share with the board. Emily is the American Heart Association representative that works with District 25. And she says, "I'm willing, I'm writing to give my deepest thanks to the staff in District 25 who partner with the American Heart Association each year through our Kids' Heart Challenge Program and to the families in the community who participate. If you aren't familiar with the Kids' Heart Challenge Program, it's a program designed to teach students heart-healthy habits at an early age to stay both mentally and physically healthy. The program encourages students to take a challenge for their heart health and allows them an outlet for donations to the American Heart Association if they wish to give. During a pandemic, it would have been very easy to push the American Heart Association programs aside for the year, but the staff in your district truly see heart health as a priority and made the programs possible for the students in a year of uncertainty. My first thanks goes out to Dr. Vine and Principals Donna Binghamman, Jim Morrison, Lindsay Anastasio, and Ann Buck. Without your support each year, this program and tradition would not be possible. Thank you for being such an important asset to the program. Now for the incredible PE team who makes the magic happen and who stuck with the American Heart Association during a challenging year to bring normalcy to the students at Greenbrier, Windsor, South, and Westgate. Al Hellman, Kelly Blough, Steve Perkins, Kevin Steck, and Eric Kerschner. This group of staff developed a way to incorporate the Kids' Heart Challenge in PE without having their usual events at school. We worked together to create a virtual way to engage the students to take challenges to stay healthy, learn about their heart, and to have the chance to give back and help others. It is not lost on me that this year was not easy for teachers, and the fact that this group still chose to continue on with their tradition of Kids' Heart Challenge meant the world, not only to the American Heart Association, but to everyone affected by heart disease and to every student in these schools that needed these heart-healthy messages more than ever before. While donations are not required to participate in the program, the Greenbrier, Westgate, Windsor, and South school communities raised a total of $22,521 to fight our nation's leading cause of death, heart disease. I'm so inspired by the generosity of these school communities and I'm honored to work with your district. Additionally, over 200 students within the district pledged to take a challenge to keep their hearts healthy this year. Absolutely incredible. Heart disease affects too many, and 80% of heart disease is preventable. Thank you to all who make this program possible in the district and to who spread awareness at a young age, promote optional donations, and make heart-healthy habits fun for students. Thank you, District 25, for your support. Hope you all have an incredible start to your school year. Emily Mulder, Senior Youth Market Director.
All right, that's great news. Any comments on that going around the board? It's always nice to be recognized for the good stuff.
And Dr., Mr. President, I also want to say, it's incredible that during COVID, a very difficult year for our community, there's so much outpouring of generosity through philanthropy, and kudos to our schools and our youth leaders, our service leaders for engaging in this amazing project. So very inspiring.
All right, thank you. Moving on, this is community input where the public may address the board, and I have the script to be read that we do every meeting. "The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and operate its meetings in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the Board President. Identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allotted time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and courteous, and the board requests that you do not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to board members or members of the board and staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempts to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community." So with that, we are going to limit this to three minutes based on the number that we have, so we're going to stick to that. I know in the past, we've kind of let that go, but given the number of comments we have today, we're going to stick to the three minutes so we can get this done in the 30 minutes that's allotted. So I'd appreciate your cooperation on that. First up, Robyn Swanson.
Good evening. My name is Robyn Swanson, and I have twin seventh graders in the district. I'm compelled to speak here tonight on behalf of my boys and their bravery. Today, August 12th, is a very important day for our family. Ten years ago today, one of them had a life-saving liver transplant. We spent today at Lurie Children's Hospital at their annual checkup. His twin brother is also a liver transplant recipient. While I am thankful that Governor Pritzker stepped in to mandate masks for all K through 12 students, my family expects administration and board leadership that can respect the authority and expertise of the agencies charged with setting public health policy, as we respect the board's guidance and support in matters of concerning our children's education. Looking for loopholes in Health Department guidance to put forth mask optional policy demonstrates poor judgment by this body. For the past five years of my boys' lives, first five years of my boys' lives, our family was in the fight of their life. Just shy of one years old, one of the twins fell limp at bedtime. He had a massive internal bleed from a complication. The Arlington Heights paramedics literally saved his life in our driveway. I was so distraught when I arrived in the emergency room and terrified that he was going to die, I couldn't even enter the room. That is a feeling in my gut that I will never be able to get rid of. His brother, four months past surgery, had become positive with Epstein-Barr virus, a common virus that can cause post-transplant lymphoproliferative disease in a transplant recipient. The combination of anti-rejection medication and the virus caused lesions in his small intestine. We woke up at 2:00 in the morning to a screaming toddler with 105-degree fever who was tachycardic. During emergency surgery, they discovered the lesions had left holes in his small intestine, which had leaked into his abdomen and caused a massive infection. He had to, he had a meter of his small intestine removed. We spent Christmas in the hospital and the next six months on chemotherapy. We are painfully aware of what a virus can do to an immunocompromised person. Most of you will never know the terror of what my family has gone through, and thank God. You are privileged by not having to have critically or chronically ill child. The last five years have been remarkably, have been remarkably healthy. You would never even know they had a liver transplant. It is not acceptable to create a situation that puts them or others like them at risk. Masks are necessary because COVID-19 is a communicable disease, and we live in a community. Public health officials make recommendations and guidelines for the health and well-being of all community members, and at no time is this more important than during a pandemic. The statistical gymnastics that this board has performed over the past year at times is irresponsible. My brave children do not get to be your acceptable collateral damage of a mask optional policy. And make no mistake, when you're citing 98% or 99% of children don't get sick from COVID, that is exactly what you are saying to the community. I have lived those statistics. Going forward, when this mandate is lifted, I expect the school district to follow the recommendations of the CDC, IDPAH, CCDP, and no less. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robyn. Next up, we have Megan Calwait.
Good evening. My name is Megan Calwait. I have two boys at South Middle School. I appreciate that the mask mandate is in place with the board. What I'm here to say tonight is that moving forward, all flexibility that has been talked about in, as the pandemic continues and changes, that this, all the recommendations are followed by you. Those recommendations from the health organizations are in place to protect us, and it is their sole job to do that. And I expect the board to follow that so that they can focus on the education of our students and not mandate them mask optional because of public opinion. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Megan. Next, Jen Anderson.
Hi, my name is Jen Anderson. I've been a District 25 parent for 10 years now. I'll keep my comments brief because I really just have one request that I can hardly believe needs to be asked of you all. I'm asking you to be board members and school administrators who respect the authority and the recommendations of the medical experts and agencies charged with setting public health policy. None of you were hired or elected to determine alternate metrics or policies to those that were already defined by experts in this field. And if that's your passion, then I think you should pursue it elsewhere. I respect your expertise in matters concerning our children's education, and I ask that you put your focus and energy there and defer to the professionals in the Cook County Department of Public Health and the CDC for COVID mitigation protocols for the entire duration of the school year, not just when it's mandated by our governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next, we have Megan Learman.
Good evening. I'm Megan Learman. I currently have two children enrolled, and as of tomorrow, a third child enrolled. We are becoming foster parents to a child from Louisiana. He's coming from New Orleans, where he has been exposed to the Delta It is absolutely important that you focus on everybody, not just those who say, "I can't breathe with a mask on." That's been proven by medical professionals, oxygen levels do not drop. When my boys attend Dryden next Thursday with a negative COVID test, of course, they will be masked. I expect this board to protect my kids with special needs. They deserve an equitable and safe education. My younger child is four, and he has a connective tissue disorder. He can start coughing, and he can randomly dislocate joints. If he is coughing bad, there is a chance he can dislocate parts of his body, a rib. He could puncture a lung. The colds send us to emergency rooms. When you have children with special needs, their needs have to come first over the comfort of the adults who say, "I can't breathe." It's nonsense. Every one of you wearing a mask right now is breathing just fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Next, we have Karen Reddick.
I'm Karen, and I have a first grader at Westgate. I'm here tonight to help convey that there is a large community within this district who is dissatisfied with the board's vote on July 15th for masks to be optional for all, when there was clear communication from every applicable public health entity that masking for unvaccinated people in indoor settings was warranted, and then again, by the board's lack of flexibility and their inaction once guidance was updated, and your universal masking indoors in K-12 schools was recommended by the CDC, IDPH, CCPHD, ISBE, and the AAP. Dr. Bynne's July 19th email stated the reasons for allowing optional masking were the local COVID statistics from June and July of this year, and that the district is skilled at implementing its mitigations. After that email, I requested that Dr. Bynne makes public the data or guidance that says that three-feet distancing and handwashing for unvaccinated and unmasked people indoors, children or otherwise, is an effective mitigation for the spread of COVID-19. I have yet to see that information from Dr. Bynne or anyone else, simply because it's not true. And while the data from this summer was most recent, local infection rates were already quickly increasing, and Delta variant was surging, so basing the board's decision on either of these criteria is inappropriate. Now, thankfully, the governor has since mandated universal masking in Illinois schools at this time, so the immediate issue's been handled. But long-term, it's wrong that the superintendent and the board would wait for a mandate rather than make the right decision by following the public health guidance readily available. As the board is entrusted with decisions that affect thousands of our community's children, I expect the board members to follow the guidance that exists. If you were diagnosed with cancer, you wouldn't ask these guys for the best course of treatment. You'd consult an oncologist, an experienced oncologist. So in the midst of a declared global pandemic virus, why are you voting your opinions rather than following the guidance issued for your use by all of the knowledgeable, experienced, and qualified organizations? Ignoring the recommendations of the public health authorities is unacceptable. On behalf of myself and my family, as well as the hundreds of community members I've connected with over the past month, I'm asking for a commitment that going forward, District 25 board members make public health decisions only by following the very clear guidance provided by the organizations in a position to give it, not based on personal opinion or that of feisty community members. In doing so, the board will not wait for the state or any other authority to mandate mitigations, but it will proactively make the decision that keeps our children and families the most safe and healthy. Ignoring public health expertise does not reflect the leadership our district needs. And while I do appreciate your service, and I'm sorry that this is hard, you all chose to run or remain on this board in April. The role demands that you make decisions based on actual information, not opinions or estimations, political or otherwise, and not waiting for someone else to make the call. Keeping children safe should always be job number one. Having the courage to do what is right is the leadership I expect here in District 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next, Ann Vogel.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ann Vogel. I'm the mom, can you hear me, of a very excited kindergartner who's starting Westgate next week. I'm here to support the mask mandate, the continuation of the mask mandate. I encourage this board to adopt a universal mask mandate for the district in the event the governor's mandate expires. The medical community agrees masks are a useful mitigation to protect against the COVID-19 virus. This board is frankly not made of medical experts. You have no business bucking the advice of the medical community. I am also here on behalf of my husband. He's a lieutenant firefighter paramedic with the Elgin Fire Department. He contracted COVID while caring for COVID patients on the job in January, and me and our three children under five were also infected. Eight months later, I am still dealing with COVID symptoms. As my husband and all our frontline workers spent a very dark year caring for COVID patients and are now staring down another one, we are also concerned about community spread and overburdening our local first responders and healthcare workers with preventable disease. You may have a heart attack one day. You may need a frontline worker who's busy transporting a COVID patient. I am also here as the proud daughter of two educators. A parent choice model puts teachers at risk, frankly. You mentioned during your budget discussion the massive turnover you had last year. What kind of message are you sending to your valued educators, to your experienced educators, to the educators that this district wants to retain by not doing everything in your power to protect them? Ultimately, parent choice is not, sorry, ultimately, so-called parent choice on a public health issue is not a thing when one parent's choice imperils another parent's child. Please support masking in schools after the mandate expires. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next, Kevin Michael.
On behalf of my wife, Jennifer, on behalf of my older daughter who attends Thomas, and on behalf of my younger daughter who attends Ivy Hill, I am here to say thank goodness for the mask mandate. I cannot overstate how disappointed and frankly embarrassed I was that it took an executive order for my child's, for my children's school districts to put into place a requirement for masking when common sense alone, to say nothing of a sense of responsibility for the health and safety of the children should have been enough to make the only clear choice in this matter. One of the many responsibilities of schools is to help create scientifically literate citizens. The science is clear that masks work. The CDC, ISBE, the AAP, Illinois Department of Public Health have determined that masking should be done in schools. They are basing this on science. When the adults in our community and those responsible for our district's operation ignore science, what example does that set for the students in our schools? Masking is literally the least we can do as a community to stop the spread of this virus. If we model to our children that it's okay to choose not to make a minor sacrifice, the inconvenience of wearing a mask, to refuse to do the very least we can do in order to significantly protect the health and safety of others, what kind of lesson are we teaching them about empathy and community responsibility? Regardless of the duration of this state mandate, I expect that masks remain mandatory in all D-25 schools until the following criteria are met. All local, state, and federal agencies no longer recommend masking in schools, and all students in District 25 from kindergarten and up are eligible for vaccination and have had sufficient time and resources to be fully vaccinated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, we have Pam Bartuzik.
I'm a little shorter here. So I'm here tonight, my name's Pam Bartuzik. I have three boys, two are in the school district at Windsor right now, and I'm here because I feel very strongly that masks should be optional, and I was greatly relieved to hear that you guys had voted six to zero that masks should be optional. Research has shown that children under the age of 15 have a 1 in 3.5 million chance of dying from COVID, which is like .000 something percent. The percentage in comparison of, let's say, sports injuries that require hospitalization is approximately 2.7%. So our children have a greater chance statistically of being hospitalized from sports than from COVID. So I'm wondering why there's not an outcry to outlaw sports and why there should be this demand that there should be no compromising in situations within a sports game. That's crazy. So it's very similar to forcing masks upon children. So why are we masking our children? Are we overturning the decision that you guys all made? It's because our governor said so, based on potentially compromised data from the CDC. So I was just disappointed to see how quickly you guys changed your minds on that and how we just kind of bowed down to this tyranny. There's 50 schools, districts, and counting that have chosen to ignore the governor's mandate. It's not law, and he's out of bounds and overstepping his authorities. So at this point, I'm aware of how unrealistic it would be to expect you to change your decision yet again. However, I'm asking that you please ease restrictions on the mask requirement. Let our children run around freely with their friends at recess without a mask, just as the majority of them have been doing all summer and have been completely fine. Please let them sit at their socially-distanced desks without their masks on. We're able to walk around freely at restaurants, businesses, and without masks on, so I'm asking that, once they're seated at their desk and they're far enough away from other children, that they can remove their masks. And I'm also asking that teachers are given the option to remove their masks if they want to. I just strongly believe that children need normalcy. Masks are not normal. They need to see their friends, they need to see their teachers' faces. Yes, there's a virus that is harmful, and it's devastating to some people, however, it's not hurting children. Parents should be able to choose what's best for their children. The key word here is "choose." I'm just fighting for a choice, and that parents can choose what's best, not the government. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next, Mary Ann Corkin.
I was extremely happy to read the draft Dr. Bynne prepared for tonight and all of the wonderful events and normalcy that are coming back this year. My kids are really excited, so thank you. When reading the MOU, I was concerned about the portion on punishment for children who do not wear masks, so I would really like a written response of what that might be. Thank you all for voting mask optional last month, giving choice to all families. I was devastated to hear that the mask mandate overrode your local control. COVID is not the first virus to come through our schools, and certainly not the last. In contrary to what the others have said, after dozens of studies over many years as recently as 2020, masks have never proven to reduce viral transmission. It's written on the box. But masks have indeed been proven to reduce oxygen, increase carbon dioxide, and when worn too long, too often, they can produce respiratory problems from inhalation of bacteria and fungus collecting on the mask. We elected you all to represent us. If you are receiving legal advice that is not of the quote "opinion" as stated in your draft, that you guys believe, please seek another opinion and do not stop fighting for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next, we have another Mary Ann, Mary Ann Zaleski.
Part of the reason I came here tonight is because I wanted to speak about just being a teacher, right? Before all of this, we could wake up in the morning, we could have a cup of coffee, drive to work, right? Get excited for our lessons for the day, get excited to see our kids' faces in the classroom, right? And one of the things that I think, back in the spring, a lot of teachers looked forward to, right, was the progress that we were making as a district. We were some of the first ones to get that vaccine. We had that opportunity, so a majority of the teachers in this district that wanted the vaccine received it. And now we're back to here. I understand that there's a Delta variant, but I think what I would like from the board is to be asking more questions about why we're moving backwards again and what the actual data in our local hospitals is telling us at this time. The other thing I want you to understand is that there's currently a House bill sitting in the Senate of our state, and it's called House Bill 2789. If you haven't educated yourself, I'm sure you have. I hope you have. If you haven't looked into why it's sitting there and what it includes, you should be aware of that. And you have to ask yourself a question, which is, why is it sitting there? What's the intent? What's it trying to do? What's it trying to take away? And the answer is that it's trying to take away the powers of the school board and give it to organizations that do not have authority in schools currently. The IDPH, ISBE, they do not have the authority to make the local school decisions. It didn't pass. The governor overstepped his position by saying that there's a mandate right now. He did not consult with the General Assembly like he was supposed to. But all of us here are supposed to believe that he did the right thing. That mandate is a law. Check on that, because it's not. He did not consult with the legislators like he was supposed to. What he did is overstepping his own authorities. He did not have the authority to do that. Now, you can go to your lawyers, you can talk to them, they might tell you different. I'm going to ask that you push further. Ask better questions, because you're not getting the right answers. The power is currently still in this school board, in this room.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann.
And until, I will leave. Until House Bill 2789 is passed, you guys still have the decision right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Copaz.
Appreciate being here. I wanted to thank everybody for great decisions that was initially made by making masks optional. It was a right decision based on actual science, because there is no other science that says that masks actually work on children. No matter what the CDC says, scientists have not proven that the masks work in school environment whatsoever. There's not a one single study out there. But I wanted to ask, perhaps someone knows, recently, Dr. Fauci on a national radio talk show, Hotwood Hugh Hewitt, when he was discussing masks mandates and masking children, he said the following. "Hopefully, this will not be a temporary thing, temporary enough that it doesn't have any lasting negative impact on them." What does that mean? So we have to mask our children, yet our health experts are going on national radio, and they're insinuating that masking our children actually has negative impacts on them. Does that just not right? We cannot do that anymore. I couldn't imagine why those masks don't work, and I'm sure most of you probably realize why. As I was sitting over there, you know, I watch people with the masks on. You're fidget with the mask all the time. Kids do that hundreds of times in a day. They fidget with the mask, they pull them down, they pull them up, they redjust, and they drop them on the floor. Someone picks it up, they step on it, they go to the bathroom, they go out of the bedroom, they eat with them, and et cetera, et cetera. There was a bunch of parents that actually collected some of those masks in Florida, and when they checked what's actually on those masks, okay, there were 11 dangerous pathogens found on the masks that are responsible for illness that include pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, sepsis, food poisoning from E. coli, Lyme disease, urinary tract infections. I mean, what is worse, COVID or the bacteria that those kids are breeding all the time? And by the way, I'm here to advocate for my son, who has asthma, and last year, in school, because he has trouble breathing, he was fidgeting with his mask a lot of times. He was made example a number of times, had to go to the principal's office, and he had to deal with it. He was depressed. Those things depress kids. This is not natural. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Next, Catherine May.
My name is Catherine May. I have two students at Windsor. I'm not an immunologist or pathologist, and neither are you. Hi. Or you. And in fact, as far as I know, not one member of our community, our local community, exists on the teams at the CDC or IDPH. I mean, unless I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure we would have heard it from them by now. I am also, I have also not run my own independent masking efficacy studies and had them peer reviewed, of course, as this board, because I'm assuming, as a public service, we are operating on public health recommendation and in the best interests of the community as a whole. Unless you can show me your own data, I expect at a minimum that during a global pandemic, this district be following public guidelines specifically regarding layered mitigations. Let's be real. At one point, we removed all snacks from classrooms because a child might go into anaphylaxis. Might. But we cannot give a surge of a deadly virus the same kind of energy. We can't commit any energy to helping keep Robin's kids safe? Why would we remove a layer of protection that would A) limit the number of quarantines and B) protect the larger community as everyone's families are trying to return to some semblance of work, normal work? What sense does that make? I expect this district to be protective and proactive of our community and our in-person instruction. I expect you to employ any and all strategies to support that mission on a continued basis. I mean, isn't in-person instruction the end goal here? Unless it's not, unless it's just become about winning. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next, Angelica Babic.
Hello, everyone. My name is Angelica Babic, and I have three kids at District 25. I just want to say thank you to everybody that's in this room. Dr. Byne, to the board members, and everybody taking time out of your day to help support our community and our kids. It means a lot to all of us. There's a lot of passion in this room, and there's a reason why. Our governor put a mask mandate for our children. So let's listen to some facts and some true science. Our kids have a 99.6 survival rate of COVID. Majority of our teachers in our district are vaccinated, and that's a huge portion to why our children are safe. So let's listen to some more facts. Back in 2009, we had a pandemic called the swine flu. To this day, it's still around. If you all want to know, it's called influenza A, H1N1. We have flu shots available for that. We never masked up at that time in 2009. So are we going to mask up our kids for the next 12 years? That is a question we should I have a hard time talking to my parents, my kids, when they turn on the TV and see Lollapalooza, Illinois State Fair, and park districts having concerts, and Great America being open, and some can say, well, those are outdoor events. Okay, so let's go to the indoor events. Allstate Arena, the United Center have Monster Jam, JoJo, Seawas in town. They could be there maskless, but our kids have to go to school with a mask on. Our district has been a leader for our kids coming back to school this fall. We should be proud of that. Thank you. Not a lot of schools did that for us. I appreciate that, and I hope all the parents do in this room, too. You guys rock. So let's be leaders again and leave this up to masks being optional. One more quick thing. Dr. Fauci, science leader, has also quoted, hopefully, making young kids wear masks won't have a lasting negative impact. So we focus on physical health with COVID, but what about our kids' mental need? What about their emotional, mental health? That's very important. I've seen depression, anxiety. I've seen kids fall apart. They're anxious. They're crying. I have not even known how to take care of some of their tantrums lately. That has been even more of an issue for me than this physical COVID. Finally, we're considering our governor and all of his mandates. We're taking leadership from him when he's given us a mask mandate last year and closing our small businesses and everything in our community and making it fall apart. His wife and kids were maskless in Florida. That really sucked. While our kids couldn't play sports that they worked so hard for, and we take time out of our day to get them there and get their uniforms and get their new bats or get them cleats or whatever it is, his daughter was riding her horse
Thank you, Angelica. It's been three minutes.
in Wayne. So mask mandates are going on right now. What's next?
Please. It's been three minutes.
Mask mandates, vaccines. When does it stop?
Thank you, Angelica. Karen Wolf. Karen Wolf, I'm sorry.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay. Okay. So my name's Karen Wolf. I have a child at Olive and a child at Thomas. So thank you all for hearing everybody tonight. So I'd like to start off with a number, and a few people have mentioned it tonight, both positively and negatively. 99.998%. That is the COVID survival rate of anyone under the age of 18. That's akin to a 1 in 1.2 million chance of dying from this coronavirus. I'm here tonight to ask why common sense, knowledge, and reason don't seem to matter anymore. It doesn't seem to matter that cloth masks don't stop viruses. It's like trying to stop mosquitoes with a chain-link fence. And it doesn't seem to matter that the CDC changed its guidance based on a study that was, one, rejected during peer review, and, two, based on a vaccine that isn't even administered in the U.S. And why doesn't it matter that the Delta variant is 1/40th as deadly as the original? All we hear is that cases are increasing, and while that's true, they're still 10 times lower than this time last year. And why are we acting like there are no treatments if someone does get sick? We are not in the same position we were a year ago. So why is it that the only things that seem to matter are misguided fear, counterfactual guidelines, and unlawful mandates? I don't know how to put it any more clearly. COVID isn't a threat, not when children have a greater chance of being struck by lightning, dying in a car crash, or dying from the flu, which has also been mentioned tonight. And even most adults have a 99.5% survival rate. The real threat in my mind is all of you sitting there choosing to do nothing about the insanity and choosing to ignore the facts. The threat to me is you not standing up for the students of this school district. I'm wondering why everyone's ignoring relative risk. Why are we ignoring the harm of masks and other mitigations while espousing benefits that don't exist? Stating over and over that this is how we'll keep students safe and healthy doesn't make it true. Why are you okay sitting there watching the psychological downfall of children? Is it because you think it's justified or because you think you're keeping them safe? 99.998%, you're not keeping kids safe. Their own immune systems do that. What you're doing with the decision to force masks and other mitigations is destroying their potential, hampering their ability to learn, and crushing their spirit. Parents are ready to say no more. We are ready to stand up with or without you. Masks optional, along with removing many of the other planned measures, is how you show respect and compassion to students and families of this district and how you use factual scientific information to make decisions. We teach kids that facts matter, but why don't they matter when it comes to coronavirus? Why is a year and a half of knowledge being ignored? You can stop the fear mongering and overreach. You can show the way forward. The question is, will you choose to, even though you may see it as the more difficult path? Or will you mandate detrimental, essentially useless, and unlawful orders onto innocent children? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Next, we have Amanda Madsen.
Hi, Dr. Byne and our board. My name is Amanda Madsen. I have two children in our district, and I just came back from our band camp concert at Thomas, and, you know, it was just one of those moments. I have a lot of these moments as a parent in this district where you're just blown away, blown away with the quality of our programs, always blown away with the quality of our teachers, everything my kids are learning, and I'm just really grateful. I'm really grateful that my kids are having this experience here. When I, I used to be a high school teacher. I taught political science and history. I have a lot of concerns about what's happening right now in our society and parallels that I can draw to several other significant events that have happened historically where personal freedoms are limited and members of society are ostracized. This is my big concern. So I'm concerned about masks, but I am way more concerned about the status of vaccination of our children and how that might impact their social life, their academic life, and how they're integrated as a part of the community. So I want to take a couple steps ahead of the mask issue. I know that it's, I'm for parent choice, because I think it's really important to preserve that authority in parents making that decision. I think it's very important. I think we're at a really critical moment right now before the start of the school year, and I'm deeply concerned if we go really strong towards, like, following Pritzker's orders, if we really take that hard line. I'm concerned about having flexibility in the future. And I am also deeply concerned about your autonomy as a really important governing body in our community, because I think most people don't understand just how important the school board is, but you truly do shape our community in ways that I think we're realizing right now. But you've been doing this for as long as you've been here. I will say that when I was training to be a teacher at Northeastern, my first education professor told me that if you really want to make a difference in this world and you want to get involved in the community, you run for school board, because those are the people who truly shape the community culture, the decisions that, what's being taught, you know, like, policies and everything, and I think we can all agree. And I have a lot of empathy for you right now, because this is probably the hardest time in our entire history in this country, and you have really important decisions to make. I just want to say one more thing. I have a lot of empathy for the parents who have children who are part of that 1% that most of us aren't so concerned about, and I know it's hard to negotiate that. But if we could just, I'll be back. I'm going to come back, and I'm going to email you some concerns about where I think we might be headed if we take a hard line with vaccination status and exposing medical information.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks.
All right, moving on, we have communications to and from board members. Oh, no, actually, I got ahead of myself there. We're going to approval of the consent agenda. And this is an action item. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Anisha.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report and addendum to the personnel report. B, treasurer's report. C, invoices. D, regular and closed session meeting minutes of July 15, 2021. E, superintendent professional organizations and professional development leave.
Thank you, Anisha. Do I have a second? Thank you, Rich. Lana, if you could take the roll, please.
Member Scott Bellato?
Yes.
Member Olene Chek?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philippeck?
Yes.
Member Serniglia?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Now, we can go back to communications to and from board members. I apologize for that. First, we have NSSEO, which usually Gina Faso
I have her report.
Yes.
Yeah, Gina submitted her report for NSSEO, sharing sad news. Principal of minor school recently shared that an eighth-grade minor school student passed away unexpectedly. The board knows this is a District 25 family as well. A wonderful young person who profoundly impacted the students, staff, and all of those he engaged with at minor and NSSEO programming. The minor and NSSEO community will remember this student as unrelenting, determined, and loyal. We send our condolences to the family. Other highlights from NSSEO are that students and staff are focused on the upcoming school year and excited to be together again. Timber Ridge gym construction continues and is moving along on schedule and on budget. Last, they're excited to welcome new assistant principal to minor school, Dominique Pacini. Comes having most recently served as an assistant principal at Cumberland Elementary School in Displanes District 62. Dominique's background in teaching and administration, in addition to her standing as a board-certified behavior analyst, brings a wide range of knowledge and perspectives that will undoubtedly continue to support the growth of our students and staff at minor school, and that's Gina's report.
All right, thank you. And just to add, I know Special Olympics is something that Gina holds true next Friday, August 20, and this is for SROs back in the, kind of the hallway there, cop on rooftop at Dunkin' Donuts. They collect money for Special Olympics. So if you are so inclined to grab a donut or some coffee and to donate to Special Olympics, that goes from, I believe, 7 o'clock in the morning till noon, and that benefits the kids that are competing in Special Olympics in our community as well as the state of Illinois. So I just wanted to add that little portion there.
Scott, is that all Dunkin' Donuts?
It's pretty much, yeah. If they can staff them, I know, just plugged them on Prospect, we have four locations that will be on the rooftop there collecting, but Arlington Heights as well, I believe. Moving on, we have IASB and Anisha.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks for sharing about the donuts, supporting that. So, no, we're definitely
How can you follow that?
Yeah, I know. But we will be there, and it's an important cause. It's really, thanks for sharing that. With IASB, you know, we, lots of, as a board, we're really committed to continue to grow and continue to learn, and ISBE always offers great workshops, and we have different board members participating continuously in professional development, the social, emotional leadership skills, and there's many others, including equity topics and other topics. And the 2021 joint annual conference is coming up in November, and so we're all preparing, and we've already picked out different sessions, and there's even pre-workshops that as school board members, we attend from Friday to Sunday, and great learning opportunities for us. We will all be participating. And in preparation, soon, possibly by the next board meeting, we'll have a resolution that we'll read over to prepare for the delegate assembly, and so we're preparing for the November conference already.
Yes, we all look forward to the November conference. Thank you, Anisha. Ed Redd, Rich?
Thank you. A couple things. Ed Redd is in its summer maybe hiatus, as our legislators are, but the luncheon for coming back has been set for September 24, so that will hopefully not be mitigated or impacted by various things. A couple things did happen. So last month, I talked about the session that was going to be held here, actually in this room, with Senator Ann Gillespie and Representative Mark Walker. So they came and talked to the public, a variety of topics, everything from crossing guards in Mount Prospect to all sorts of different topics were discussed. But there was a common thread that really came up was really the impact of property taxes across the state. Now, many, many of the individuals there asked questions specifically about property taxes, and they did, both Ann and Mark did a great job of really, you know, commenting that it's not state legislature, doesn't legislate the property taxes. It's the schools. It's the local park districts, the, you know, libraries and the villages that predominantly make up our property taxes. So they did bring up, though, that one of the things, the current structure of the property tax process of doing that is incentivizes local governing bodies to max out their levies. And this is something we started to talk about last time, but, you know, we'll have an opportunity to talk more about. But the current process, because you can't go back and recapture, if you don't maximize it, you lose it forever. You know, it's the same kind of concept of compounding. The challenge is that, as we've all seen, you know, our property tax bill sometimes keeps going, going up and up, all for good reasons. I'm not disputing that at all, but it's something that we need to be aware of and talk through a little bit more. A couple other laws that went into, not into effect, were passed, though, that I think impact us. were passed, though, that I think impact us. One of the ones is about teacher evaluations. Again, it's important for us now we employ teachers. Right, with this new law, starting in September 1st of '22, if a teacher receives during an evaluation excellent or proficient, rather than being evaluated every two years, they now get to be evaluated every three years. They added a little stipulation that after that, you know, after you evaluated once at either excellent or proficient, then that second year after that, you only have to have an informal review. So that's an impact on us, and I'm sure, you know, the organizations will be looking at that particular piece. The other piece is, and we've kind of talked about the impact of this, is both paid sickly following birth of a child and then FMLA. So FMLA was expanded for teachers. It's a little bit different than the business or the outside of the teacher community. In the outside of teacher community, you need 1,250 hours to be eligible for FMLA. Within the teaching community, based on this law, you only need 1,000 hours. So that's a good thing to allow that particular piece. Getting back to the birth of a child, it does allow for 30 days of leave. That can be used any time period within that year, within the first year. So that, again, provides some more flexibility to new parents, new teachers, in that particular process. So that's all I have. I'm sure as we get into further topics on the agenda, we'll talk more about certain things, and obviously in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Stacy, anything to add? No? All right. Moving on, Board Governance's Framework, where we read and kind of review a section from our Board Governance's Framework. In this month, I have chosen our behavioral expectations, kind of timely with what was going on today. This is our behavioral expectations under J. Sincerely listen and seek to understand the viewpoints of others. And I know I was a little bit short with the three minutes and kind of hold steady there. I appreciate everyone being timely and getting your message across. And as board members, we listen to everybody who has an opinion and take that all into account. I know every board member has a certain opinion and a certain way to interpret the data and to be a board member, and I appreciate the collaboration we have and to work together as a board. So I thought that was a very timely and significant portion to review today, and I appreciate everyone on this board committing. I know we're here right now, but it's behind the scenes, month to month, enormous amount of time, so thank Next, we have communications to board members, and this is the PTA, Nicole Barbieri.
Mr. President, I have a report from Nicole to make in her absence.
Sounds good.
As the community may know, that board members serve on different committees other than attending board meetings, so it's really great to connect with the community. And myself and Rich, as an alternative, alternate, as an alternate.
Might be a bad thing.
We serve the Arlington Heights Council of PTAs, and I was there yesterday or the day before with them. And great to see all the work that the PTAs do in our community and connecting our community. And I also talked about how really we appreciate, just like President, you know, Scott said just now, we really appreciate feedback from everybody. So I communicated on behalf of the board that as members of the community continue to give us input, we appreciate that. And here is Nicole's report for us as PTA president. That each, she says, each school's PTA has been hard at work preparing for the upcoming school year. We have held two council meetings, attended a virtual back-school event with other PTA leaders within the Northwest Cook Region, and have attended officer training courses. The offices in our community are ready to lead and support the children, parents, and staff this year. Becoming a member of the PTA paves the way for children to learn and grow. Throughout the school year, the PTA provides all children with meaningful experiences and programs such as author visits, assemblies, and athletic clubs. The PTA shows their appreciation for staff by providing meals at conference time, lounge supplies, funds, classroom celebrations, and a meaningful teacher appreciation week. The PTA also allows parents to advocate for change at the local, state, and national levels of government. Did you know that PTAs across the United States have worked to have nurses in schools, school bus safety arms, and then school nutrition programs and more? So if you have not done so already, become an advocate for all children and join your school's PTA today. I love the plug, and we all definitely, as board members, appreciate everything that our PTAs do.
Thank you, Anisha, and thank you, Nicole, through Anisha. Next, ABC 25 Foundation, and this is Gina, and she has a pre-statement prepared.
Yeah, Gina submitted her report. ABC 25 team is gearing up for another exciting year of supporting our amazing teachers in the district. We'll be opening grant applications, grant applications next week, and look forward to seeing all of the new creative ideas the staff and teachers will bring forward for consideration. Look for the email announcement or follow us on social media for more information on grants and grant writing. We hope that many families have the opportunity to join the foundation during school registration, but if you did not, please consider joining us. To learn more, look us up on social media or on our website.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Byrne and Gina, for providing that. Next, the Arlington Teachers Association, ATA, Allison Berg.
Good evening, and thank you. I just wanted to start off, I actually like typed this up, and then I had to add something at the end after our luncheon today. So I just wanted to mention how wonderful this afternoon was to shoot ATA's own horn since we planned it. But it was, it was super great. The ATA, Anisha, and Brian, admin was there, and our building principals. We welcomed over 50 new teachers today into the district, and it was just so nice to have everybody together. And you could just feel the excitement and the energy in the room for starting the new school year. So I just wanted to quick, just throw that plug in, that it was just such a great afternoon, and I didn't want to let the meeting go by without me mentioning that. The Arlington Heights Teacher Association is thrilled to have completed our MOU for the upcoming school year. We are so pleased to have had the opportunity to work this summer with both representatives of the board and district administration. So just to thank you to Rich and to Brian, and to Brian K. and Stacy Malik for taking their time out of their summers to work with us in the creation of this MOU. It was such a positive experience with so much great discussion, collaboration, and we even had some good laughs. We absolutely appreciate your willingness to come to the table and have an open and meaningful dialogue with us, and we're looking forward to continued support and collaboration as the year progresses. Having completed this MOU prior to the start of the school year allows teachers to focus on what's really the most important part of our job, which is the kids. The teachers are thrilled to be starting this school year in person with children in our classrooms. We're ready to work. The kids are excited to come back and are eager to learn, just as we always have. So again, thank you for all your efforts, and we're ready for a fabulous school year. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we move on to our superintendent report, and this is the 2021-22 school year update. Dr. Byrne?
Thank you, guys in the background. Excited to talk about the 21-22 school year with a brief update for the board. I should start by saying, of course, our goals for this year are to be back and in-person learning, to, am I okay?
You got it.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. To grow the academic achievement of our students, and of course, to engage them in a warm, welcoming learning environment. And we're all very excited about the upcoming year. See if I can get this to work. There we go. The, before I go into some of the details, something that the board may not be aware of is yesterday evening, we received a letter from the Illinois State Board of Education Superintendent, Dr. Carmen Ayala, on the topic of the new school year and on the topic of the executive order 2021-18. And in her letter, Dr. Ayala shares that the executive order has the force of law, and she understands the pressure that all of us are going through as we try to come together as a community to move forward. However, she writes, "Noncompliance is not an option." And so I just wanted the board, this is a document the board had not seen before, to let you know about Dr. Ayala's letter last night, and to also share with you that we continue to get communication from the State Board of Education, from the Illinois Department of Public Health, and we consider all of that as it comes in. Today, I'm going to talk briefly about the executive order, some of the kind of revised definitions of close contacts, and what the quarantine options are currently according to the Illinois Department of Public Health. Executive Order 2021-18, it's Section 1 under School Mitigation Measures that most applies to District 25, and that states, "All public and non-public schools in Illinois serving pre-kindergarten through 12th grade students must follow the joint guidance issued by ISB and IDPH, and take proactive measures to ensure the safety of students, staff, and visitors, including but not limited to..." And there's two sections. A, requiring the indoor use of face coverings by students, staff, and visitors who are over age 2 and able to medically tolerate a face covering, regardless of vaccination status, consistent with the CDC guidance. And the second part of Section 1, implementing other layered prevention strategies such as physical distancing, screening tests, ventilation, hand washing, and respiratory etiquette, advising individuals to stay home when sick and get tested, contact tracing in combination with appropriate quarantine and isolation, and cleaning and disinfection to the greatest extent possible, and taking into considerations factors such as community transmission, vaccination coverage, screening testing, and occurrence of outbreaks consistent with the CDC guidance. In the updated information, this was as of August 2nd, the IDPH is further delineating definitions of close contact, so I'll try to explain these the best I can. For someone who is a close contact in a classroom and they're unvaccinated, if they are less than three feet away from that positive or probable case with a mask on, they are considered a close contact. So less than three feet, even with masks, you are considered a close contact in a classroom environment. If you're less than six feet, you are a close contact if you are not wearing a mask. So for our situation, starting with the schools in Illinois, starting with masking, you would have to be less than three feet away from a positive or probable case to be considered a close contact. There's also outside of the classroom but still indoors, an exposure definition for those who are unvaccinated. If you are less than six feet, you are considered a close contact even with a mask. And this applies to something like an assembly. If we were to have an assembly and students were closer than six feet, in that environment, even with a mask, they could still be a close contact. For outdoor exposure, outdoor activities with or without masks are not considered close contacts, vaccinated or unvaccinated, it doesn't matter. We do not consider people close contacts in outdoor situations. And for vaccinated individuals, you are considered a close contact if you have exposure and symptoms. So if you're displaying symptoms and have been exposed, you could be considered a close contact. Or if symptoms develop after exposure, a vaccinated individual would be asked to isolate by the health department. Quarantine is another area people have been very interested in, and there are multiple options this time. There's actually four options that relate to quarantine in schools. The first one that we've been used to in the past is that an individual who is a close contact would quarantine for 14 days if they're non-vaccinated. We have a second option this year. If someone is not showing symptoms, their quarantine could be reduced to 10 days. So they were not, they were non-vaccinated, they were a close contact, they were asked to quarantine for 14 days, but if they did not display any symptoms by 10 days, they could be turned to school. Option three, if a close contact has a negative PCR test taken on day six or after their exposure, they could possibly reduce their quarantine to seven days. Our school nurses are very educated on this and would be able to work with individual families should they have a student who is a close contact. And then there's a fourth option this year that is new called the Test to Stay Program. So this is the screening test, and Stacy Malik will talk about that in our next agenda item. But if we are doing screening testing and an individual is a close contact, if they continue to take the screening test on days one of exposure, day three, day five, and day seven, and those results continue to be negative, that individual would not have to quarantine. So you can be an unvaccinated person, and if you're participating in the screening test, you do not go home as long as you keep testing on days one, three, five, and seven negative. And if testing's not possible due to a weekend, they just advise us to test as soon as possible. We are, if we do screening testing, required to notify the health department when someone has completed their Test to Stay program, so they've gone through days one, three, five, seven. If a close contact develops symptoms, however, they should immediately isolate. It's important for us to recognize that to participate in this Test to Stay program, the following steps must be followed. Schools must require masks for all individuals regardless of vaccination status, and both the infected individual and the close contact must have been wearing masks at time of exposure. This may not apply to household siblings. They may, again, there's further criteria there, so they may not be able to use the Test to Stay program if they have a household exposure. So as we move to the new school year that we are all excited to get to, except for this clicker, there I am recommending that for the new school year that we open school for full-time instruction, we align all items in the current, with all items in the current executive order, and we continue to communicate with our community that flexibility continues to be important as health department guidance changes, and we listen to our health departments and adapt as new information becomes available. Tomorrow, there is a pretty detailed question and answer booklet that will go out, the one that the board has been able to review. We've even been adding some more things to it today as questions have come up to make sure that's user-friendly for our families and our staff. And that would go out, and it really kind of goes in more detail of all the aspects of school as it relates to the pandemic, and we'll continue to update that document. It'll live on our website. It'll show updates in a different color. So as we get new information or people have questions that we haven't thought about, that information will be available through that document. Questions from the board?
Laurie, just want to thank you first off for laying out what the focus is for this year. I know we spent so much energy on all mitigations and this, that, and the other, but really, our focus is, continues to be, and will be, making sure that we provide the best academic area or academic environment so that their kids can perform. That will continue to be, and, you know, I'd like to thank the ATA for, you know, their partnership and alignment with that particular goal. You know, one of the things, just looking at this, you know, the various things that you laid out here, and maybe just to clarify, as I recall, we have the three-foot distancing, and I go back to our very dynamic six-foot distancing discussions. I'm not here to bring that up, but just as a general discussion of size, where I think we're fortunate to have large classrooms, whereas we can easily fit the number of students into the classroom and not, well within the three-foot. into the classroom and not, well within the three-foot margin at the elementary level at a minimum.
Yeah, I would say at the elementary level, yes, and the vast majority of middle school classes.
Following with that question, in one of your slides, and it had to do with, and, you know, if you don't know, that's fine, because I don't know if we might know that answer, where they talked about, you know, what is considered a close contact in the classroom, but then it's not considered a close contact at a larger, or it's considered a close contact at a larger distance. Why, what makes a classroom so special that these governing bodies would say, "Well, the classroom has something special in it that you could go to a smaller distance"?
I don't know the answer to that. I would assume, however, in a classroom, that it's a more controlled environment of, you know, kids being at their desk and the teacher having a smaller group of kids to monitor and support, where if you go to something like an assembly where you might have a full grade or even much larger multi-grades, it would be more difficult to, you know, supervise movement, but really, I don't know exactly. I think, though, it's the classroom being a more controlled environment.
Okay. You know, I think the other part to maybe stress to everyone is, you know, last month we talked about flexibility, and it's important to maintain that flexibility through this. The world, or much more information has come out since July, it's paramount there, and it will continue to come out over the next weeks, months, as we continue to move this process. So, flexibility in everyone is important as we get updated guidance and we try to react to that particular guidance. Maybe, one of the questions maybe for Sarah in our audience, you know, earlier I talked about, and there's, whether we agree, disagree individually, collectively, all that type with what the governor did, what gives the governor really the power of law? You know, the letter that Lori talked about, ISB is saying, "It's the law, you got to follow it." And there's plenty of debate, but from your opinion, what provides that basis of law?
And, just for the record, this is our attorney, Sarah Bocek.
Under the Illinois Emergency Management Act, the governor has broad police powers to be able to implement during times of disaster, which by law, underneath the code, it basically says that a pandemic or an epidemic in that situation would be one of those situations, in that he has broad police power. And so, by doing that, he has then implemented several executive orders. Those executive orders have been challenged over the last year to two years several times, both in the federal and the state court. So, not the law alone gives him the power, but the courts have actually confirmed his power to be able to do that, which is why it carries the weight of the law, which is what Dr. Ayala, as well as other, you know what I mean, institutions and attorney firms are basically indicating to school boards that it has the full weight of the law because the courts have confirmed it. There are two lawsuits that are currently pending. Today, there was a TRO that was taken from McHenry County and transferred to Sangamon County, which is where Springfield is, and that was not heard today. There's also been a case filed in Southern Illinois by a gentleman who has filed many of the lawsuits that have been challenged to the executive orders. At this time, there has not been a single case, other than the initial one that was determined in Clay County and then overturned at the appellate court, there's not been a single case at either the federal or state level that has overturned the governor's ability and/or powers under the executive order to issue those orders. So, that is why the opinion is that it carries the full weight of the law.
Follow on?
Absolutely.
So, I know, for example, if, you know, I go fast and I run a red light, Scott's going to be there and he's going to write me a ticket. So, what is the effect if we, as a board, or any of these boards, not that we say we would or anything of that nature, just, what's, what's the implication? What's the stick that the governor carries, or ISB carries, or whoever carries on us?
Absolutely. So, the executive order is in place, and then by, by law, you know, several rules, regulations throughout that, the Illinois State Board of Education is tasked with making sure that schools comply with the law. Under their powers, under 2.3.2.35, I believe is the exact citation, they have the ability to recognize schools as either compliant or non-compliant, either recognized or non-recognized. If you do not, if you, if a school board, you know, fails to follow the law, then the school district's recognition is at issue. The school district's recognition, if we lose, if a school district loses recognition, which yesterday happened to a private, a private school, which was quickly, the private school quickly changed their tune, because when you become non-recognized, the very first thing that happens is you lose your state and federal funding. The second thing that happens is they strip you of the ability to either play IESA or IHSA sports. And they also, once you're non-recognized, your diploma does not, the diploma either at this level would be from the eighth grade or more at, not any less important, but at the high school level going into, you know, post-secondary, the issue becomes is that you would be granted a diploma that is not recognized by the state of Illinois. And so, more likely than not, in all of the history of K-12 education in Illinois, only two schools, one being yesterday, and one several years ago, have been non-recognized. Both of those institutions were recognized within a 24-hour span because they complied with the law. What happens with you guys if you fail to comply the law about, you have all of those things from a recognition status, but then you also have immunities that you are provided. So, a school board is provided, and school administrators, and those who work, and volunteers that do things for the school enjoy what's called tort immunity. Tort immunity basically says that as long as you're acting as a reasonable prudent person would, doing your job as your duties as a school official, as a public official, then you, you enjoy a broad, you know, tort immunity from litigation or damages. However, it says if you have a willful disregard or a conscious disregard to act contrary to what a reasonable prudent person or the law, then it could pierce, what is called pierce, the tort immunity. If you pierce the tort immunity, then this, if, and you lose the case, then you would have civil damages. And civil damages would be assessed to the school district as a whole, and they would be paid, and we would look at Stacy, they would be paid, you know, got, you know, knock on wood, right? A lawsuit would have, they, let's say, that they were able to prove that there was a conscious disregard, the tort immunity doesn't hold, and damages are assessed to the school district. Damages would either have to be paid from the tort fund, if there was money, you know what I mean, in the tort fund, which the, the risk you run is the tort fund can be levied at high amounts. There's not a lot of caps, even in tax caps, to be able to stop. So, let's say unfortunately, you get a huge, you know, settlement against the school district, the school district would, and if they didn't have the funds, they would have to go out and levy the funds, which would increase taxes. The second is that it covers, it carries potential civil and criminal implications for, you know, for board members as well as the district as a whole. So, combined all of that together is why the recommendation is, is that you follow the law, given the situation that we are currently under.
Another question. So, I mean, so, thank you, I mean, it's a good, a lot of good information. So, if we were not supportive of the governor's mandate, what could we do as a community? Well, one, what could we do as a board, and two, what could we do as a community that fits within the, I guess, the legal realm, and what maybe is a little bit outside of the legal realm, I guess?
I think before the mandate, there was, you know, and I know this is going to, you know, there are differences in opinion even right here in the room. Before the mandate, either the mandate by IDPH and ISB, as well as the mandate of the governor, there was that flexibility. There was the option, which you guys exercised, to look at all preventative measures together. And what the CDC said is, "We can phase in and out certain medications based on vaccination availability as well as community, yeah, community transmission rates." And so, now that there's the mandate, right, those mandates have limited your ability as local control to be able to look at those CDC guidances, or, I mean, those CDC preventative measures. What we can do right now is to continue to have these kind of robust conversations about if the mandate is lifted and we return to either guidance and/or protocols, what that will look like. For instance, there are some people having conversations, multiple superintendents, including yours, who continue on a, you know, weekly basis, having conversation with the Cook County Public Health Department about, "What does this look like? What is our end game? How are we going to transition out of this?" We continue to have those conversations in Springfield. We continue to have our conversations with our legislators. We continue to have it with our health officials. We partner with people like Northwest Community and different things to say, "Please, take a look at this, and what can we do to eventually move this, move the needle and to move the thing?" We've recommended at this point that school districts, under the law, for school districts to get involved, there aren't anything to do with vaccinations, it would be that the IDPH and, you know, by regulation dictate what the vaccination would be. So, right now, it is, is recommended but not required. We, we do not anticipate that changing until, one, the EUA is lifted, and, two, the vaccination age drops. But we've recommended to school districts, that's, that you can, you can have clinics, you can have different things like that, but that's not, right now, per se, a preventative measure that spans all the way down to PK or K all the way up. So, it's, it's continuing to look at preventative measures, it's continuing to have these conversations, it's continuing to listen to the public, it's continuing to advocate on your, on your behalf to your legislators and as well as, you know, your health, your health officials and different things like that. Really, until the mandate is lifted, you know, the local control, you know, is, is limited at this point.
Sorry, then, so really, then in summary, there's three things that can happen. The governor can lift the mandate by himself, legislatures could legislate a change to the emergency meeting-
Management Act.
Thank you. Management Act, or C, the courts, federal, state, whatever, would intercede in some fashion. Those would be the three normal legal rights that we have at this time.
And our hope-
Legal rights, but legal, legal actions.
Correct. And our hope at this point is that the, the surge in the numbers that are dictating the mandate at this point will return to what we enjoyed during the early summer months, and we could be looking at different, you know what I mean, different local options as we move forward, so that you-
Yeah, you're right. That, that would be the fifth and probably the most, most best option for everyone, is that our, our rights go back down to where they were with the summer.
Correct. And without engaging in any sort of debate, the fourth one in there, between the fourth and the fifth, would be if vaccinations drop to, like, you know, age five, but that's not going to, you know what I mean, unless the Illinois Department of Public Health makes a massive change and puts that as a required, not, you know, recommended to be required, that would be something that, I'm sorry, required, not recommended, but required, that would, you know, that doesn't probably get us to a point where things will be lifted, potentially, but we're just going to have to wait and see.
And Lori, just, as a question for you, just from a timing perspective, we've had a long tradition of, as soon as, again, with flexibility and communication, so as soon as the, the governor provided the mandate, you immediately took steps that have, that have been consistent with what the board has said, is, hey, do what's legally right, and those types of things, and you immediately started communicating a change to, you know, whatever our decision before, or not a change, but just, hey, we have an overriding change, I guess, right?
Yeah, and I would say we even, the timing was interesting, even at that July meeting, when we approved the motion that we did, and that did align with, you know, us talking with our Health Department at the time. It was pretty much that day and the next that we started to see the trend grow up, and we saw our Health Department now come out with stronger language, and so we started reviewing and going, "Okay, we may have to, we definitely have to relook at this." And then, yeah, it was, when it becomes the governor's mandate, then it was okay, it's time to put that in place.
Anisha?
Thank you. Ms. Bush, thank you so much for being here today. If you could please clarify and explain, as far as insurance policies and liability goes, could you explain a little bit more about that?
Currently, yes, absolutely. I'm sorry I sat down, I just didn't want you guys to have to talk through them. So, currently, all liability insurance policies for school districts currently have exclusions for communicable, you know, pathogens, which COVID-19 virus falls under that. And what that basically means is that school districts are extremely limited in their liability insurance for the spread of COVID-19. And that then makes the tort immunity even more important, you know, because without the liability insurance coverage, then you're looking at what would be the defenses if by chance there would be legal suit, and that's why the tort immunity is extremely important. And like I said before, what makes the tort immunity so important is because you want to stay in that frame of following the law under that circumstance. Now, before there was the mandate and there was just guidance, there was, there was a pathway, because the CDC guidance, which is what a reasonable prudent person would follow, was indicating that there are different preventative measures and standards that you could follow. So, the action, the action that you took in July was in accordance with that, and I would feel very comfortable talking through those different options based on your community spread and your vaccination availability at that time. So, it's a constant talk, but with the mandate in place, it adds an entirely different legal analysis as well as legal considerations that I, that I have an obligation to tell you as a board to consider when you're looking at your return to school plan.
Okay, thanks so much. And as fiscal responsibility continues to be a prerogative for our board, that, that's good to know, good information to have. My other questions are for clarification for Dr. Byn. Dr. Byn, if you could clarify a little bit more what lunch will look like at schools, and what will recess look like outside?
So, recess will be back to our typical recess. We're not going to have the zones anymore. Kids are free to go play like they did at recess pre-pandemic. We're not having masks required outside. Somebody could always choose to wear their mask. And then, now when we have indoor recess, the difference from pre-pandemic is we would have our masks on if we have to have indoor recess. Lunch, as Stacy alluded to, through the federal government, lunch is free for all students in our school district this year. Students, there will be a process that where somebody does in the morning have to say they want lunch so that we prepare enough, but there's no cost for that. At the elementary, I think last I heard, we'll have one hot item and one cold item choice. At the middle school, probably a couple of hot items and a cold item choice. Students will go through the lunch line like typical. We will eat in the lunchroom as much as we can. We do need to have some spacing to the best of our ability. So, it is possible that, and probable at some schools, that we'll use more than just the lunchroom space. In some schools, they will be able to fit all the students in the lunchroom space. It really depends on the school and the number of kids per grade, and we'll have the dividers available for those who want to use them, but it'll be a more typical lunch experience and a very typical recess experience.
And Dr. Byn, is that, is there any guidance from ISB, E, IDPH, and health organizations about lunch, whereas before they had talked about being in the classroom? Are there any guidelines for that now at this point?
Yeah, really, the guidelines are to have, create distancing as best you can, really is, is all the main crux of everything that they're saying.
And then, and just to follow up to that, and what considerations have been given, while the weather is nice and we all want to enjoy the weather, for outside, use of outside spaces for lunch?
Yeah, well, we-
And other activities.
Yeah, so, we've had some picnics last year. We'll continue to have some outside opportunities as much as possible. We have looked into, last year, we did a lot of research into, like, some tents and some tables. It didn't quite pan out, or it wasn't going to serve us in the best way that it could. We're doing some, been doing some more research this year, haven't found what we think is really sustainable in terms of, like, putting up a tent at each school, but we'll have some outside opportunities for lunch as well as mask breaks and in addition to recess.
Thanks so much, Dr. Byn. My last, it's a comment, is when Stacy was giving her budget, you know, the budget item, I wanted to mention at that time as well, that it is just incredible as far as the amount of work the Food Department has done in distributing food and thousands and thousands of meals, and the heat, in the, you know, cold, cold temperatures, working so hard, every single one of them. So, a heartfelt gratitude to the Food Services Department in, you know, in maintaining and implementing this program and the food security during a really difficult time for the community.
And Adam Harris is sending me a note that they served 994,000 meals, so.
That's incredible.
Adam can use the microphone, he can come up and-
Adam can use the microphone, he can come up.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
I just had a follow-on question, Lori. I know a lot of the mitigation processes rely on masks, right? But several of parents talked about masks can be irritating, you know, all those types of issues. Is there, and I think last year we had mask breaks or something like that, is that, is that, I don't know, I know it's getting to the operational level, have you guys considered that, or how will that be, is that, is that being done? What is that, those types of things?
Yeah, again, one of the nice things about this year, it actually started the last week of school last year, was that we could be outside without masks. So that will be in place for recess, we'll do weather permitting, a lot of PE outside, which we typically do in a school year, try to get outside as much as we can, so that'll give the kids some opportunity. And then our teachers will have mask breaks based on their schedule and what their kids need. And we do have masks for students if their mask gets soiled or is uncomfortable, we have replacements that they could use as well.
Mr. President. Dr. Bynne, I just have a couple of questions going through the FAQ. First, with the, the physical distancing, classroom-school protocols, you know, this year we, if I'm not mistaken, we're not doing the daily health certifications. Can you talk about why that's been eliminated?
Yeah, so those are no longer recommended in our, by our health departments, nor are the temperature screenings, the daily temperature checks. So you'll remember here in District 25, in terms of the daily health screenings, we just asked our parents to please do that, and we did the temperature checks at school, so those are no longer recommended.
And then, under the shield testing, is the shield testing an opt-in or an opt-out for families? And then whichever way you choose, can you change that at a later time?
Yeah, so originally, and Stacy will talk about the shield testing in more detail in the next item, but originally, I was asking Stacy and her staff to look at an opt-out program, but through Stacy's research and work with our attorney firms, we've changed that recommendation to an opt-in. And so once we get, people get the opportunity to opt-in, if they change their mind, they can, of course, opt out at a different time.
Okay.
And vice versa.
Okay. And, you know, the IDPH and CDC are recommending, you know, school districts promote vaccinations, we've done that before. What are we going to, what are we doing this year along that lines?
For vaccinations?
For vaccinations.
Sorry, okay, I just wanted to make sure I heard you.
Promoting vaccinations.
Thank you. Yeah, so you know that we were one of the first to host a clinic, and that went exceptionally well, that was for staff. And we also then, the pharmacy reached back out to us when vaccines became available for 12 years and older and said, would you host one for them? So we also hosted for any district, 25 families that chose to have their students attend that. And we are being contacted today by the State of Illinois Vaccination Outreach Department, so we'll be connecting with them. They're reaching out to see if we would be interested in hosting more clinics for the community, not just our school district. And when vaccines become available at younger ages, we will be very interested in supporting our community and hosting those for those who wish to have it. By us having it here, it just, it just makes it easy for people who live here to, you know, get it quickly and easily. And again, the vaccination clinics that we've held have really been exceptionally well-done, with many other districts and community organizations reaching out to Stacy and Ryan Schultz and saying, talk us through how you did that. So when that need is there, we are very happy to be a community resource for that.
In its press conference, the governor stated that masks would be made available to schools at no charge. What does that look like at our level? Is that a reimbursement and we requesting them?
Yeah, so we did get some last year. We felt the ones that we received didn't really fit our students very well, so we went and purchased our own. And then Stacy and Ryan applied for FEMA grant that reimbursed us for all of that. We still have quite a few of those from last year, so we'll start off using those. And if we're seeing that we're running low, you know, we just have to request it and they, they send them directly to us. And so we can always do that, but we'd also look at, would we want to get them ourselves again? Again, we just felt the ones that we received didn't fit our students well.
Yeah, yeah. And I know this is in the FAQ, but I'd like to highlight it, and you could even explain the close contact, so setting aside vaccination status, I am a close contact, but now I'm vaccinated, but we look at it and, oh, you're vaccinated. And you talked through that, but I'm a parent that, you know, I have other concerns, I have family members that might be at risk, and I want to know if my child is identified, even if they're vaccinated. And so could you talk about that and what implications are?
Yeah, that's a good question, Greg. We did get questions from families, just in that exact scenario, right? Maybe my middle school child is vaccinated, but maybe I have a child at home that's immunocompromised, so I want to know if my middle school child might be exposed. So in the guidance, or in our FAQ that will come out, anyone who is exposed, meaning they're within that three-feet distance in a classroom or within the six-feet distance in a different area of the building, will be notified that their child was possibly exposed. So if they're vaccinated, if they're wearing masks, we're still going to notify those families. Your child may have been exposed, however, they are not required to quarantine because both people were in masks or because your child is already vaccinated. A parent can, though, say, well, I'm going to choose to quarantine my child anyway because we have a family situation where this could be very harmful. And if a parent did choose to quarantine their child anyway, they could join our remote class that'll be in session. So that'll always be there for a parent choice. We will notify anybody within that distance and tell them whether we believe they have to quarantine or not, but they could always decide to quarantine voluntarily.
Thank you. And maybe the last question along this lines, so we've heard from parents, you know, concern over, I mean, the pandemic's stressful, no matter who you are. And so what social and emotional supports, I know we have a social-emotional program, but for supports for those kids that are really having a rough time for whatever reason, you know, stress at home, stress at being at school, whatever it is, what supports do we have for those kids or that parents can reach out for?
Yeah, thank you. And you referenced, this is the first year we'll be implementing our social-emotional curriculum at the student level. Last year, we were working on it with staff, and we're ready to implement that across all nine schools and all grades. So that will be great help. But as you said, there's a lot of individual resources. The board increased our social work staffing a year ago, so we have additional social works, social workers, and a family can at any time reach out to their classroom teacher, reach out to the office and say, I'd like to connect with a social worker and have someone for my child to talk to, and we have the staff to, to support that.
Yeah, Ms. President, I'm glad Greg brought up social-emotional support, and that's great, you know, we also saw that we had a really high turnover in staff, and so that's great that there's social-emotional support for our staff members as well, so thank you for that. I have some follow-up questions about vaccines. We know that the statistic of marginalized communities who want to get vaccinated, that number is lower, and so when you do, so as far as what role could our district play in kind of doing the outreach work and the community outreach work to educate folks who choose to get vaccinated to do so, especially in marginalized populations?
Yeah, so the State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health is asking school districts to promote vaccinations, to partner with the health departments and promote that. So at this point, what we've been doing is, right, we have the ability to reach many of our marginalized families through schools. So we're just sharing all that information when it's available, when different vaccine clinics are created, both through just our school newsletters, but also through, you know, our different resources and social workers and specialists that work with some of our families that may have a difficult time accessing those vaccines, just like we've done with food service, right? We've even done some door-to-door on food service, so we are able to also provide information through that process in those food bags for families. So that's why they're asking us really to help the health departments and promote, is because they know we have direct connection with those families.
And then as a follow-up, what, for the staff who do choose to get vaccinated, what percentage of our staff are vaccinated?
So we haven't gathered all of that information yet. We will be working on that as the school year starts. We know that when we held the vaccine clinic in January and February, we did about 660-plus staff members, but we don't know all the staff members who, there were already staff members who'd gotten it before then and some since, so we still need to collect that information.
Okay. Dr. Bynne, I want to thank you for, during this whole time, for continuing to provide us with all perspectives so that as school board members, we can make the best informed decisions. And I really, I know as school board members, we also appreciate all perspectives of input coming from everybody, and we read all emails, so it's been really great to kind of look at all perspectives and understand all perspectives to make the best informed decisions. So thank you.
Chad.
I do have a question about the testing. I know we have to sign, it's an opt-in, but just want to make sure everybody understands, because I know there's still testing available at a lot of locations. Families can't go to their physician to get a test and come back and say, hey, I got two tests two days in a row, and that would allow us to say opting back in. I just want to make sure that's very clearly understood, because it sounds like you're opting into a program and we're only using that testing facility as opposed to allowing them to go to their, you know, physician, pharmacy, whatever's available.
Yeah, you're exactly correct. For the test to stay option, you have to be using the screening testing that would be offered here.
So, or just to maybe clarify off of Chad's point, just to be very, very clear, the key is the student comes to school, is not quarantining at home, so the student comes to school, gets tested in schools, and stays in school, because it's a 15-minute test or something of that nature, right? Or somewhere around there, or maybe I'm missthinking.
Yeah, we have a couple of test options. We have the 15-minute and we have a 24-hour one, but you're right, the student never quarantines. They come to school full in school, but they maybe, when they come in in the day, go to the nurse's office real quick on day three, on day five, on day seven. As long as those keep coming back negative, the student never quarantines.
Can I just, so the 15-minute test is a different test. The shield test, which is test to stay, is a 24-hour, up to a 24-hour turnaround.
But during that time, the key, yeah, the key, key piece of that is they're in school. And that's the key differentiator that is important to stress in that process. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, this is listed as an action item, so if we have a motion.
Sorry, does board member, did you have something to say?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, before I do this action item, I'd like to ask board president, I know that there was some conversation about the wording, are we continuing, as a board, are we continuing with this wording or are we changing the wording? I just want to put that out there before I make that.
So this is, this is a recommended action? This is what the superintendent recommends? If you have any other recommendations for this, that's, or if anybody, any board member has different wording.
I guess I have one question on that before we make a recommendation. We don't even make the recommendation technically, based on all of our conversations. We are still moving forward with this intention of opening up in full, and we don't necessarily have to vote, because the reality of it is the mandate says that we are going forward with masks. I appreciate the recommendation, I appreciate the conversation. I think the vote is kind of moot from the perspective of that we have no reason to vote. Because we all agree, we want flexibility, we want to make sure this, we want to make sure we have, you know, everybody in the community understanding it. I think it was important to have, you know, our attorney here tonight to explain this so that they understand what we're asking and what we understand. So I'm not sure I would want to vote, but that's just.
I think we learned from prior, prior votes that it limits us, from month to month, that limits the day-to-day activity or the day-to-day decision-making for our, for our district. So I hear what you're saying, and at this point, like, the governor's mandate supersedes everything that we're doing, and if that gets lifted, I think we revisit it, but at this point, that's a.
Can I just, can I just ask Sarah? So if the board doesn't vote, right, and because we then, we follow the governor's executive order, and if the governor's executive order gets lifted, the vote that the board took in July, is that now null and void, or does that become active again when the executive order goes away?
We would have to look, we'd have to go back and look at the exact motion at that time before I could absolutely confirm it. But if it was just a straight motion that this is our return to, you know what I mean, return to learning plan, absent, you know, a mandate or by law, then it would potentially default, you know, back to that at that time. But at any given time with 48 hours notice, the board can reconvene, you know what I mean, and take a different course of action as long as it is 48 hours before and properly, you know, properly noticed up.
That's my only concern, or just to make sure the board is aware. If you take no action tonight and the governor's executive order goes away at some point, then we would be putting in place the motion that was approved in July. If you, if you make this motion now, it, it, what, supersedes, it deletes the motion in July and this becomes the motion, and if the governor's executive order goes away, we have to come back to the table to make a new decision opposed to the one we did in July being automatic.
So basically, one way or the other, we still have to come back. That's all, I want to make sure I'm understanding. What I'm hearing is we could pass this motion, but, and that takes away the July motion, but the reality of it is, if the executive goes, or executive order goes away, I would still want to come back together, understand what the new regulations are, what the new proceeds are, and then have another vote to make sure, because, I agree, I understand what you're saying, I just want to make sure that I'm interpreting it the right way, because either way, we would want to come back together to ensure we had a vote at that time of what was going to happen next.
Yeah, yeah, my concern, yes, you're right. My concern, though, is I'm uncomfortable if the July motion is a default and for some reason we're not able to get together in 48 hours, or I would be more, my recommendation would be that we follow through with a motion tonight so that there's not a default in place that we're racing to get ahead of in 48 hours.
Mr. President, you know, I want to agree with Lori, is the concern about a default position is we don't know what our future conditions are. And to Lori's point, if we can't gather in a timely fashion to respond to those, I mean, we agree that their flexibility is the key, but we're talking about a position that we took any number of weeks before that doesn't reflect the current conditions, necessarily.
But then I would be asking, what are we defaulting to? Because when I see flexibility continues to get important as we health department guidance changes. So what we're saying, right, is that if we take this vote, we're eliminating July, but we're saying it's flexible to what the health, and we don't know what the guidance is going to be. So again, it's back, back to my same question, I get what we voted on in July, but we don't know what the guidance is going to be at that point in time in the future under the same breath. So we should probably, that's why I'm saying, why vote now, just to say, okay, well, we null and void that one, we know the guidance on that one was based on that, and we null and void that one, we know the guidance on that one was based on that, and we can, you know, and I agree, we could get back together, but we still would want to get back together to understand what those guidances are because that could change rapidly too, right? If the vaccine becomes available, so that's all, I'm just pointing that out.
And my, and my concern from my role would be, so if the executive order goes away, if we, if we take some motion tonight, the executive order goes away, then I can still say until we have, you know, further direction, we're going to continue doing what we're doing. And maybe it's 48 hours we're together, maybe it's five days that we're together, where otherwise, if the executive order goes away and we're not able to get together in 48 hours, then we have an action that I have to go ahead and implement.
But Lori, you know, what the governor did was not a surprise, right? I mean, most everyone knew that something was going to happen, right? Maybe not the exact verbiage, but there was some indication that, you know, whether it be a week before or something of that nature, that he was going to do something. He likely won't come back and remove the mandate tomorrow, right, next week. He's probably going to schedule that at some, you know, every 30 days or something like that. Especially, you know, if we think back, going back to phase five, he communicated, hey, he's going to come out and go into phase five, which we're all in. Granted, we're all in phase five, but we are where we are. But he communicated that, I think, at least two to three weeks ahead of time, you know, that we're going to move into that direction. So, you know, though I understand what you're saying is that I'm, I'm concerned, I'd rather, as Chad said, is if, if we don't know what we're going to fall back to, or if we believe that we're going to come back to some unknown thing, then call the board together. You know, if we know the governor's going to do it, call us together and we'll have a discussion at that point. But it seems like all we're doing is reinforcing, in your recommendation, what we're already doing, right? Because earlier you said, we've already, we're already following the guidance of the, of the mandate, right? So we're doing that already. I, I'm not sure you need, what the importance of reinforcement from us is to say, follow the mandate, we're doing it. It over, it over, it overrode.
The difference is, at the time, if and when the mandate changes, right? If we don't do anything tonight, by default, we go back to masks.
Optional.
Optional, okay?
But no, no.
If we do vote tonight, we would stay with our current status, independent of whether or not the, the governor lifts it. It would, we voted to support the governor's mandate, the masks would remain in place. So ultimately, by not voting, we'd be, we'd be forcing ourselves to go back to optional masks within that timeframe.
I disagree. We're, at that point, what we're saying is we'll continue to be flexible and monitor the environment that's around us, right? Arlington Heights is different than, you know, Chicago or Alcipp or Springfield. I mean, we have a different community, different issues within that area. We need to be looking continually at what's happening. So, again, I don't think, I'm, I'm not the governor and I don't know even to say what he, you know, how he thinks or what he, what his process is, but historically, he's communicated ahead of time of changes that he's going to be making.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So it won't be a surprise that something is coming.
Absolutely.
And for us to schedule that ahead of time, if we feel that there's something that we need to look at again, then we have the opportunity to look at what's happening in our community at that point.
Right. To Chad's point, we're going to do it either way.
Exactly. We're reinforcing something we're already doing.
I just want to make sure that I verbalized, you know, like, because ultimately, at the time in July, you know, our position was to reinforce and communicate that masks were recommended, right? The only issue, we didn't, right, absolutely. It really hasn't changed. The only difference is, had we not voted for flexibility in July, we would have put ourselves and our teachers in a position to have to mandate police enforce, right? The governor's done that for us.
Correct. He's taken that out of our hands, he's done it.
Vote, don't vote, it really doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Mr. President, Mr. President, yeah, I think, operating on the hopes of what, how the governor will conduct his actions, and we have a recommendation from the professional we trust to run our school district, I think those are important. And frankly, you know, there, there's no harm in taking this motion. There is no downside to taking this motion at all. And, and board members can vote their conscience, as we always stress. So I think rather than operating on a hope or a projection of what might happen, we can take the conservative path, make a motion today, and then respond when we know what happens with the mandate or with our local conditions as we talk about with flexibility.
Mr. President, thanks Greg, I want to make sure I'm not cutting you off.
No, no, I, thank you.
Mr. President, I'd also like to lean on Ms. Bocek's legal advice at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we always lean up. Yeah, exactly.
Tell us about, no. So, based on this discussion that we're having, could you give us what, your legal advice based on this motion?
My recommendation is, is to give clear guidance to your administration, and that would be to take the motion so she knows exactly, exactly, my recommendation would be that you do the motion, that her recommendation, that gives her a clear path that says, this is what you're supposed to do until we reconvene. Without that, you're leaving open that there's another plan in. So my recommendation is to be clear and accept her recommendation, what, what she's asking you to do is to give her clear of saying, I have to stay status quo until I bring them back and we make another determination. So I, my legal opinion would be to support her recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we're going back to July. I think it doesn't hurt to, to make a decision now, and when the governor makes a, a decision on where we move forward, we're going to be in a different timeframe than July anyway. And we can look, maybe mask optional is, is way above the top and we, we need to change that to where, you know, it, it looks totally different. So at this point, I think it'd be, I, I would support that we would do this motion and kind of put ourselves in this timeframe, and then when we move to the next, the next step, we have a different perspective on where we're at.
I agree with what you're saying.
So we're ready for a motion, Mr. President? Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the opening of school for full-time instruction aligned with all items in the current executive order from the governor of Illinois, and communicate that flexibility continues to be important as health department guidance changes. Second?
I'll second.
Anisha, thank you. Greg, Anisha, if you could take the role.
Mr. President, I do have a comment about my vote. Should I share that now or after the vote?
Yeah, when you.
When I'm called? Thank you.
That's fine.
Member Olonechak?
Again, as we talked before, I think we provided clear guidance in terms of what we are. The mandate is overreaching, overreaching over us in the sense of local control. I vote no.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philip Pack?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Inconsequential, pretty much mandated, yes.
Member Conley?
Just because I do not agree that you'd vote, I'm saying no.
Member Scott Bellato?
I, I want to preface my comments with a note of respect for my colleagues, if their views differ from mine, and for anyone listening. And I would say that I believe it's important that this passes because we will be aligned with the expert guidance from the CDC IDPH and CCDPH, and that's important. I also think that, you know, it, as this passes, we are offering the best protection to the unvaccinated students and staff in our care. I also believe we are addressing the concerns for the rise of more contagious variants, particularly for children. In this passing, we will be reducing the chance for breakthrough cases in our vaccinated population. And maybe the last two points are most important. First of all, of those would be, we are maximizing the in-school learning by dramatically reducing the need for quarantining. But I'll finish before placing my vote by saying, you know, I think we can all agree that the return to normal cannot happen soon enough. And probably the people seated at this board, you know, feel that way, and I'm certain everyone here feels that way. But as we anticipate that day, I believe our job is to protect and provide for all children in our schools, including the most vulnerable. And this responsibility extends to those students that are medically compromised by this pandemic and to those that do not have the opportunity for a vaccine yet. With no voluntary remote option available to parents like last year, we are duty-bound to provide all students access to an education that is as safe as possible. We can do this now and in the future by following the expert recommendations of our public health organizations. I vote yes.
All right, the vote passes four to two. Moving on, this is the COVID-19 testing support agreement with the Board of Trustees, the University of Illinois. And this is again, an action item. I don't know if you want to go first with the presentation and the motion, or motion first, but either way.
Should I make the recommendation, Mr. President? I'll go ahead and make the recommendation.
You have a motion?
It's late, we're all kind of running low on fuel here. But, Mr. President, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the COVID-19 testing support agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois as submitted.
Thank you for the motion. Second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Rich. Stacy?
In the middle of the summer, if, if the Board will recall, we did look at the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, implementing that early January with a significant cost. It would have been hundreds of thousands of dollars to do this testing at the time. In the middle of this summer, this testing is now being made free to all public K-12 school districts, funded through federal funding through to the state. This is the University of Illinois screening test where they are basically screening to see the prevalence of the COVID-19 vex, COVID-19 virus, thank you, within your community. So this testing is not, unlike the ByNEX Now testing, which we did last year, which is for symptomatic individuals to determine if they actually are COVID-positive, this S.H.I.E.L.D. test is used to determine even in asymptomatic individuals whether or not COVID exists in our population. So this testing, this agreement would allow us to move forward with getting this testing set up. We would be working with an operation partner called MedCall, and they would come into our schools to handle all of the testing. We would, using the opt-in option, as Dr. Bynum mentioned earlier, we would require that parents who wanted their children to participate in this screening testing to complete a consent form, at which point the screening would occur most likely one day per week in each of our schools, not necessarily the same day every week, not, not necessarily all schools in one day. MedCall may be in district every day of the week, just in a different building or multiple buildings throughout the week. They would do all of the testing during the school day, and then they would take the results to a lab for processing to get results in up to 24 hours, typically less. And what else is important? As Dr. Bynum mentioned, students who would participate in this testing, if they became a close contact, wouldn't, I'm going to hope I say this right, not be subject to quarantining as long as they then tested every other day, rather than being quarantined to ensure that they did not contract the virus from being that close contact. So this helps, again, reduce the possibility of students having to be out of school to Sorry, it's, it's late.
Take a minute, because I want to kind of state the obvious in, in the question, right? So in other words, if, you're, I almost did. If you test day one, three, seven, whatever it is, one, five, seven, right? If at any point of that, obviously, if you test positive, you then are removed for quarantine.
Correct.
Is that quarantine from that moment 10 days?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's what I thought, okay.
Yes.
I don't know if that helps or hurts your train of thought, but.
Well, because as we know, individuals can have COVID and, or have had COVID and never know it because they never had any symptoms. They can be completely asymptomatic, they can have mild symptoms, they can have severe symptoms. So this test is really intended to identify, does it exist in your community in asymptomatic carriers? And we just don't, don't know that. It does depend on getting at least 100 students, would be the goal per building, a minimum of 100 students in each building to participate. Fully vaccinated individuals are not, the CDC does not recommend that fully vaccinated individuals participate in the testing unless they become symptomatic, at which point they then could participate.
Do you know what I mean, they have to opt in after the fact? I'm just trying to understand.
They'd have to opt in after the fact. Yes. I'm happy to take questions.
Rich?
Stacy, just a quick question, just so I'm clear then. If someone has had it and has the antigen, right, they're not going to test positive on this or something like that, just if you have an active virus?
So, thank you. If, if someone has had it, I think it's a 90-day window that they would not need to test because they would have the antigen, they wouldn't be required to, well, I don't want to say if they'd be required to quarantine, I don't think they would, but they wouldn't need to take the testing.
But the test won't make them positive?
Taking the, oh.
Yeah, so if you take the test and you have the antigen, are you all of a sudden, oh, you're COVID?
No. No, it's testing for the virus.
Correct, yeah.
And it has a 90, over a 98.6%, or maybe that's the number you guys are, oh.
98.6, it's an efficacy rate of 9.6%.
90, okay, thank you. It's a efficacy rate of 98.6%, so it is considered one of the most highly accurate tests that we have, or that exists.
That's a great.
And this isn't one of the TCR tests that was recalled by the CDC?
No.
People don't know what we know about that, I just haven't, they, they recalled the time, so I just, we can confirm that, right? I'm assuming it's not.
It is not.
I, I just think this is a great, great option, low cost, at least for us, initially, but, you know, obviously.
Well, and I think it can also give us really good data about what's happening internally in our schools.
Coming into our school.
Right.
And I think it's good for parents, right? As a parent of two children that are, even though.
Sorry, my fault, I speak loud enough normally, I don't need it. Even though I have, like, two, two children who are technically vaccinated, I would, if they weren't, I would want them to participate in this because it does help us, one, identify, it helps us keep the kids in school, which is the goal of all of this at the end of the day. And I know there's going to be, I get it, there's going to be people like, I'm, I don't want my kids to be tested, I want to be that foster cessation situation, but I, you know, having been tested several times myself, it's not a bad situation. This one, I think, is the spit test, so they just do the spit and they put it in. So it's not difficult, it's not invasive on the kids, it's nothing complex. So I think it's an important part for our community to understand, this is a good way for us, for us to help to keep this going throughout the year, right? I mean, we want to be back, I mean, we all want to lose the masks, I know, we all want to get ready to go back to normal, but I think it's important for the, the parents to understand that they have an opportunity to keep this going. And so like, I know you're saying you need 100, I'd like, you know, if we could get a status at the next meeting of how many people opted in, it'd be great to hear that.
I, I agree with my colleagues, this is such a great program, and since the University of Illinois is the alma mater for, for some of us, many of us, I have to say, go online and go.
You know, I'll just add, so we're going to continue to notify all families in a school when there's a positive case, like we have in the past, and that'll be even more.
I agree with my colleagues, this is such a great program, and since the University of Illinois is the alma mater for some of us, many of us, I have to say, go online and go.
You know, I'll just add, so we're going to continue to notify all families in a school when there's a positive case, like we have in the past, and that'll be even more meaningful when S.H.I.E.L.D. testing is happening, because we would know if there was a case even in an asymptomatic person. So that, so not receiving a letter is even more impactful because we know we'd have this screening testing.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian?
I just think, I think this could be assumed, but I want to just get it out there. So would we just continue having our nurses administer the rapid test in all shapes and forms?
Actually, no. We were, they are continuing that program as well with the By Next Now Abbott test. That test is specific for, specifically to identify the virus in symptomatic individuals. We have applied and received now the CLIA waiver for all of our individual schools. So rather than host that testing at the end of the school day at Thomas, we will actually, our nurses will have the ability to do that testing in their nurse's office right during the school day. So if a student presents with symptoms at 10:30 in the morning at Windsor School, the student can go down to the nurse, and the nurse can do the test, and in 15 minutes, if it's negative and it turns out, maybe just, I mean, allergy seasons, a lot of the symptoms are the same, and the student feels well enough, the student can go back to class versus having to call the parent and send the student out for the rest of the day. So we're maintaining that, the Cook County is continuing to fund those, or provide those testing that they get, those tests from the federal government, as in just another way to try to keep kids in school.
Good.
All right. Seeing no more comments or questions, we'll take this to a vote. Lana, if you could call the roll.
I think. Member Patel?
Yes.
Yeah, we already did.
We all need confirmation. Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Scott Palato?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Moving on, we have the first reading of policies, press 107. Dr. Bynne?
Thank you, again, just first reading. Please note that this first reading section has many policies related to Section 2, which is the Board of Education section of our policy manual, as well as Section 6. And I know I received some questions from people, I'll make sure that I'm able to answer those in time for the second reading.
Moving on, we have the first reading of policies, five-year review, press 107.
And then again, this is the Illinois Association of School Boards, being a member, they go through our policies and anything that's five years old, we put back in front of the board in case there's any updates. And so Lana notes on here for you, through color coding, what might be an addition or a deletion. And again, this is just the first reading, so we'll bring them back to you at the next meeting for a second reading and approval.
All right. Personnel and planning, Dr. K, this is the Food Nutrition Services Guest Teacher, et cetera, handbooks. So, Dr. K, we have several different motions, I believe, for one. But take it away.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share with you four different handbooks tonight. Sorry to bombard you with all four, but I thought it would be helpful to have an opportunity to look at them at the same time. The four different handbooks represent different groups of employees. These are the ones that don't have a union or a collective bargaining agreement, like our SEIU and our ATA. Annually, the Personnel and Planning Department will update the employee handbooks, including all four of these, what we call the ESP, or Educational Support Personnel, the Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurse, or TCARN handbook, the Food and Nutrition Services Handbook, and the Guest Teacher Handbook. During the pandemic, the updates did not take place, so I am excited to bring these to you this evening and highlight some of the updates in each. Connecting the purpose of updating these employee handbooks, it is important to note that the goal in reviewing these handbooks is to attract, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality, innovative employees. In addition, we seek to cultivate a healthy climate and culture that creates conditions and supports to meet the needs of all of our learners and workers. The contents of the employee handbooks address items that impact employee health, safety, and culture. I will begin by highlighting the recommended changes to the ESP, or Educational Support Personnel Handbook. In Section 2.01, made it clear that the language related to the initial salary placement at the time of hire, not the employee annual increases each year. In Section C, the language added to make clear that the employee may not receive the annual raise while on a plan of assistance through the evaluation process. Section G, remove references to a salary, since there is no salary schedule, and replace it with the word compensation level. Section 2.04 clarified seniority for ESP positions and non-ESP positions. Section 2.06 added clarity to comp time rules, including a maximum number of comp time hours at 40, and all additional hours worked will be paid above the 40 hours already accrued. Section 3.03 made it clear that the two days of bereavement leave per incident of death was an annual benefit. The section dealing with job-related injury clarified that while an employee is receiving full pay and workers' compensation benefits, they are required to turn over the worker's comp check. Added language for leaves for part-time employees who work less than full-time but more than 600 hours per year are entitled to prorated sick days. Section 3.12, language added to ensure that any vacation payout does not bring the board over the IMRF 6% rule and put the board in penalty status. Any required vacation payment shall be made after receipt of his or her final paycheck for regular earnings and after his or her last day of service. Just a couple more in this handbook. Remove recognition of service as it does not impact the benefits within the handbook. Section 3.12, added information regarding voluntary participation in the 403B program. In Section 5.01, remove the superintendent from the clarification process for reduction in force. And finally, Section 6.06, remove rights of pregnant employees section as they are covered by other board policies, including Board Policy 520, Workplace Harassment Prohibited. So tonight, I am asking the Board of Education to take action on the recommended updates to the Educational Support Personnel, also known as the ESP Handbook. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of our ESP staff and the exceptional service they provide to our students. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the recommended changes and updates as written to the ESP Handbook. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. K. This is an action, we'll just, we'll just do the motions as we go.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's, that's, I think.
Just a separate amount.
If we could have a motion for the first ESP handbook.
Mr. President, before we do that, I just have a quick question for Dr. K. Could you just clarify that the point we said, remove the superintendent from, could you just clarify that point?
Yeah, I'm just going to reference my notes on that one, it was removed from 5.01. It was the clarification process and the reduction in force, so I'm just going to go to the section if you don't mind. So it's in the third paragraph, "If a reduction in force becomes necessary, the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Planning will meet with the individuals to be released before the Board of Education formally takes action. ESP employees are encouraged to seek further clarification or direction from their immediate administrator or the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Planning." We are, I'm suggesting we remove the next step of talking to the superintendent, that they would go to their immediate administrator or personnel.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sure you're a very collaborative team, so I'm sure you will discuss this internally. Thank you for clarifying.
I generally tell her everything, yes.
General.
That's good, that's good to know, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the Educational Support Personnel Handbook for the 2021-22 school year as submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anisha, thank you, Rich. Lana? Roll. Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Scott Palato?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Moving on to TCARN.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurse Handbook for the 2021-22 school year as submitted.
Thank you, Anisha.
Second.
Thank you, Rich.
All right. Next, I'd like to highlight some recommended updates to the Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurse, also known as the TCARN Handbook. Section 2.03, clarify the cost to employee for continued health benefits over the summer. Section 2.05, clarify on how many hours may be accrued in comp time, who needs to approve the hours, and who approves when it is used or paid out. Section 3.03 clarified the family relationship that qualify for bereavement days. Section 3.07, update regarding whether or not we can tender the worker's comp payment if our employee is earning full pay. Section 3.09, update to ensure the board does not pay a penalty for IMRF. Section 3.10, remove rec, the section on recognition of service, as again, this does not apply to benefits that are in the handbook. Section 5.01, add the different compensation levels that make up the seniority rules, which impacts the RIF process. Section 6.12, remove the rights of pregnant employees section as they are covered by other board policies, including Board Policy 520, Workplace Harassment Prohibited. And the last update added information regarding voluntary participation in the 403B program, tech-sheltered annuity. Tonight, I am asking that the Board of Education take action on the recommended updates to the Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurse Handbook. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of our TAs, Clerical Assistants, and RNs, and the exceptional service they provide our students and staff and community. At this time, I recommend the Board of Education approve the recommended changes and updates as written in the TCARN Handbook. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, Dr. K, can you talk about in Section 2.05, you mentioned that, you know, how much comp time you can accrue, but just interested in the commentary on the zeroing out of comp time in July 2022, and just, because those are changes to the handbook.
Yeah, so the comp time that is earned during this school year is paid out at the hourly rate that they are currently approved at. If you carry over hours into the next school year, you're now paying those, let's say, 40 hours at a higher rate than you would have paid when they were earned. So that's why we felt like, we don't want to eliminate comp time, we just want to take those hours that were earned under the first pay rate, pay them out. So you work it, you earn it, we want to pay you for it, but we want to pay you with the rate it was earned. Then on July 1st, when you have a new pay rate, typically a higher one, and you start earning comp time on those, you'll be paid out at that higher rate.
Thank you.
All right, we have the motion on the table. Lana, could call the roll?
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Scott Palato?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Moving on, this is for the food, and the good stuff, food and nutrition.
Yeah, Mr. President, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the Food and Nutrition Services Handbook for the 2021-22 school year as submitted.
Thank you, Anisha, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rich.
All right, next, I'd like to highlight some of the recommended updates to the Food and Nutrition Services Handbook. Pages nine and 10, updated language previously identified as "good" in defining requirements regarding grooming, appearance, hygiene, et cetera. The language added to replace the word "good" is "regular and appropriate." Page 14 and 15, updated the language regarding benefits for full-time and part-time employees. Page 17, updated bereavement language to match the language across all of the three employee handbooks that we've since now discussed that receive this benefit. Update the language in section under "injury on the job." When you get into the prorated sick leave deduction, in exchange for 100% of the regular pay, it does not require the employee to tender the district their worker's comp check. So in essence, they would be double-dipping, I've mentioned it in all three handbooks, so we just clarified the language, you would then have to give us the worker's comp check if you're receiving full pay. Page 21, clarified language regarding participation in the sick leave bank is mandatory. Removed reference to use of vacation leave since no employees in this group receive vacation. Added clarification language on the summer pay benefits. Added format changes to clarify benefits for all employees, full-time employees and part-time employees, and the difference between each one. Added language for leaves for part-time employees who work less than full-time but more than 600 hours, as they are entitled to prorated sick days. Removed reference, again, to the recognition of service from the handbook, as this does not impact benefits. And similarly, remove the rights of pregnant employees as they are covered by other board policies, including 5:20, Workplace Harassment Prohibited. I wanted to add, not only should free food be given to children, but they should be given to staff, I think it would help our, it would help morale, but it would also help filling all positions. Tonight, I am asking that the Board of Education take action on the recommended updates to the Food and Nutrition Services Handbook. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of our food service staff and the exceptional service they provided our students and community. Of special note, this group of employees has served just under a million free meals. If the number was accurate that was shared tonight, they probably didn't count the 6,000 I ate, which would put us in a million free meals since March 2020. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the recommended changes and updates as written in the Food and Nutrition Services Handbook. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I just want to, you know, food service is something that sometimes we don't look at, but provides so many different means, and just maybe a shout out to that entire staff, they continue to do a phenomenal job. We're fortunate to have not only them, but all our staffs do a phenomenal job, but they do a great job.
Thank you.
Brian, you have, there's no teasing on this board. All right, Lana, please call the roll.
Member Scott Palato?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Sherniglia?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Moving on, it is the Guest Teacher Handbook. Dr. K, do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes, Anisha.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the Guest Teacher Handbook for the 2021-22 school year as submitted.
Thank you, Anisha.
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Take it away, Dr. K.
All right, lastly, I'd like to highlight just a couple recommended updates to the Guest Teacher Handbook. Page one, update the disclaimer language to match the other handbooks. While there is no language specifically addressing changes contemplated for such things like COVID-driven arrangements that change how we're using subs and what we have them do, the disclaimer language allows us to make those alterations as needed throughout the year. Page 14, updated the language in the drug and alcohol-free workplace to cover the legalization of cannabis and make clear that the possession of medical cannabis on school property is prohibited. Tonight, I'm asking that the Board of Education take action on the recommended updates to the Guest Teacher, Substitute Teaching Assistant, and Substitute Registered Nurse Handbook. Those two often get left off of the title of this entire handbook. I sincerely appreciate the efforts of our guest teachers and substitutes, as the service they provide is critical to our success in allowing us to continue operating smoothly each and every day educating our children. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the recommended changes and updates as written in the Guest Teacher. and updates as written in the Guest Teacher, Substitute Teaching Assistant, and Substitute Registered Nurse Handbook. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I just have a comment. Dr. K, thank you for your inclusive leadership, even in acknowledging the title and everything, and we truly appreciate the services of all our staff. You know, we know that there's a shortage of school nurses. Even, we knew last year how valuable our guest teachers were in the buildings, of food and nutrition. So all the staff that you've mentioned, the handbook that you're creating, and creating such an excellent working environment for everybody. So we continue to encourage folks to come to District 25 and be part of this amazing team. Thank you, Mr. President.
Gary?
That's Lana, right?
Yes.
Is there a office? You're still here? Come out.
What is it?
It's, I don't know.
I think.
I'm not opening the door.
No, do not open the door.
It's an hour.
We're going to take five minutes. All right, thank you for everyone being very calm and civil there. Just, we wanted to make sure that there's nothing outside waiting for anybody in the audience or the board as we leave. So with that, I believe we have the last item here, and then, do we take a vote on that last?
We did not take a vote yet on the Guest Teacher Handbook changes.
Yes, so let's Lana call the roll for our Guest Teacher Handbook.
I had a question on the motion, because the motion that Member Patel made was that the Board of Education approved the Guest Teacher Handbook, but Dr. K said Guest Teacher, Substitute Teaching Assistant, Substitute Registered Nurse. So what should the motion be? Should it be all of those or just Guest Teacher?
If we are.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, if it's legal to add those two others, I would recommend, we amend the recommendation.
Has amended, so.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It was definitely not Anisha's fault.
No, so the motion is then amended to include the positions that Lana stated.
Yes, thank you, Lana.
Member Olenicek?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Filipak?
Yes.
Member Sriniglia?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Moving on, we have the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding, Implementation of Transition Model of Reopening. And this is an action item.
Mr. President.
Yes, Brian.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the ATA District 25 Memorandum of Understanding, Implementation of Transitional Model of Reopening as presented.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Rich. Dr. K.
All right, I'd like to thank you in advance for the opportunity to share the proposed MOU between the Board and the ATA. This memo memorializes the agreements reached by both parties on the items discussed. The goal of the MOU is to clarify the impact on the working conditions for our ATA members. In some cases where the current professional agreement is silent or otherwise does not have any language, this MOU provides clarity on these topics and serves as the agreement between the Board and ATA on these silent topics within the professional agreement. The duration of the MOU extends from the first day of the teacher attendance, which is Monday, August 16th, until the earliest of either of the following. Number one, either party notifying the other in writing that such agreement needs revision or shall expire. Such notification will trigger an obligation for both parties to meet and discuss the revision before any changes are implemented. Number two, the last teacher workday of the 21-22 school year. Or number three, as we've talked a lot about tonight, new guidance or regulation from the state or federal government is provided that impacts the MOU. Both parties agree that this MOU shall not be used as precedent or cited as practice by either the Board or the Association in any proceeding whatsoever except to enforce the terms of this MOU. This is a collaborative process between representatives serving the ATA and reps, representatives of the Board. I would like to thank the participants who helped negotiate this agreement, including Allison Berg, Casey Whitaker, J.J. Pearl, Board Members Sriniglia, Board Member Rich Olenicek, and Stacy Malick and myself. And, look at that, it's in bold. It's in white font, though, that's why I can't read it. And Kate Reno. There are six different categories memorialized in this agreement that I will touch on briefly. One, health and safety. A significant part of this section was for teachers as maintaining up to the four-foot teacher workspace distance to the greatest extent possible. Number two, the delivery of instruction. A significant portion of this section spells out the addition of four staff to support students who will require remote instruction while in a quarantine order at home. Another portion of this section that is important to note is the ability to use student learning coaches for additional reading and math intervention and/or math instruction at fourth and fifth grade. Number three, communications. This section spells out the requirement of the administration to inform the ATA of confirmed cases of COVID-19 as soon as the district is aware. Number four, teacher absence. This section clarifies the steps available to building administrators when attempting to fill teaching positions that require a guest teacher, and there are none available from outside the school building. Number five, communication to parents. This section clarifies that if a parent requests to attend a meeting remotely and the teachers mutually agree, then the meeting may occur using an online platform or the traditional conference call. Duration of agreement, the duration of agreement, as I stated in the beginning, there are three ways this memo would need to be revised. I want to once again thank the ATA Executive Board and the representatives of serving for the Board for their collective and collaborative efforts finding time this summer to meet and discuss ideas so that an agreement could be reached prior to the start of the year on Monday. Tonight, I'm asking that the Board of Education take action on the MOU. At this time, I recommend that the Board approve the MOU as written between the ATA and the Board of Education. Are there any questions?
Comment, Mr. President, a comment.
I was going to say, if you had questions, you should have asked them.
He didn't say comment, so, just had questions, so. First off, thank you, Ryan, for that recap. It's almost, the recap's almost longer than the MOU, per se, but I just want to thank the ATA reps, you know, Allison, Kate, Casey, J.J., and even Ben Gray from the IDA who helped with that, along with, you know, our reps, Brian, Stacy, that worked on this. So great collaboration, great conversation in looking at, in listening. I think above all, listening and understanding the concerns, the needs, the, what the ATA was looking for, and being able to meet in terms of their needs. So very, very good session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the very positive things that the whole board has heard with the collaboration, and that's a good way to move forward. I'm excited about this. With that, Lana, can you call the roll, please?
Member Sriniglia?
Yes.
Member Conley?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Olenicek?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. This is our second community input where the public may address the Board. I'm going to just, oh, we have one, okay. For those who.
I'm sorry, you're on my list.
Okay, that's fine, we'll call you up second. First, we have Sam Pappas.
Oh, good evening, Board Members. Dr. Bein and counsel. Earlier during the Board Meeting, we, I think Dr. Bein passed the slide that described the executive order from Governor Pritzker, and it's, I'm just reading it verbatim, it says, "requiring the indoor use of face coverings by students, staff, and visitors who are over age two and able to medically tolerate a face covering regardless of vaccination status consistent with CDC guidance." I was just wondering if the Board, maybe its counsel or somebody can provide more guidance to students and their parents as to what medically tolerate a face covering? Because I did hear some parents that said their children really can't tolerate it, they get asthma, or they have asthma and other medical conditions. So there is possibly an opt-out for some parent, for some children who are really sensitive to masks. So this could be a compromise for both groups, but I'm just saying, maybe it's worth further exploration, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next, Karen.
All right, so I had a whole thing prepared, but I'm not going to do that. So I wanted to maybe just touch on some of the things that were in the report and some things that were discussed. So one thing is I think that we're toeing a very dangerous line with unequal treatment of unvaccinated and vaccinated students. I think it's really not supported by science. So I wrote down about five things that are sort of contradictory, that were either discussed or that were in the report for this upcoming school year, so just a couple of those. For example, it was stated that if you're vaccinated, you're not considered a close contact unless you're symptomatic, but the unvaccinated don't spread it when they're asymptomatic either. So it really doesn't make any sense. Secondly, the quarantine rules, that you don't have to quarantine if you're vaccinated, but again, you can still get coronavirus or spread coronavirus either way, because these vaccines don't prevent you from getting the virus, they're symptom reducers, okay? They don't prevent you. So again, there's not a lot of logic or reason in that. So again, I think it's a bit of a slippery, dangerous slope to treat people differently when it's not even supported by, you know, the sciences, that one's more of a threat than another. Another question I had is about these testing. My question is if they're PCR tests, because the CDC itself has actually said stop using them, and they're giving people till December, because they can't actually differentiate between the coronavirus and the flu virus. So that would be something I would encourage everyone to look into, in maybe what testing are we even using, because it might not even be accurate. Okay, okay, the timer's not on, okay. Lastly, okay, but I'll go fast. Lastly, I really caution against promoting the vaccines. Someone had mentioned that, like, ISB is asking us to promote them, and again, I think that's really a dangerous thing to do. You know, they're experimental, it's a brand-new technology, this is not a measles vaccine, this is brand-new. We have absolutely no idea if they are safe. The clinical trials go until March of 2023. So I think it's really important that we're not coercing or trying to encourage someone to get it when we really don't know if it's safe. I think that needs to be something that families decide, if it's safe and effective for their own child, rather than the schools kind of cheering on to do it. I think we have to be really careful with that. I won't take any more time, because the timer wasn't set. So just a few things that I would hope that maybe everyone would look into, and be really cautious about sort of how we're handling some of these mitigations to make sure we're not sort of crossing a line, whether morally, ethically, or constitutionally. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that, we move on to future agenda items. This is topics with dates to be determined. The General Board Meeting Topic Schedule.
Yep, real quick, Laurie, in that, at least as I recall the last time I looked at it, I didn't, and I thought we talked about that there would be a session, that you're planning a session, and it might already be on the calendar, I'm just not connecting it as I read it, to talk about preschool, a full-day kindergarten, I'm not preschool, full-day kindergarten, thank you.
Yeah, kindergarten, that is on the schedule. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. before the next Board Meeting.
Okay.
It might be the late September Board Meeting.
Yeah, I remember, I thought I saw, but I didn't see it in the listing, so, okay.
Yeah, Dr. Bein, is there a reason why it's not on the list as well, the General Board Meeting Topic Schedule? Even, I know we're discussing it, but.
What, you know, what we've done with that is our annual topics that we always discuss, so that list are things that come up every single year.
Okay.
We didn't add unique topics to that.
Okay, is that list accessible for transparency purposes? Is that list somewhere?
You mean for the public?
Yeah.
It's on Board Docs, they can access it.
Okay, thank you.
No, the unique ones.
The unique ones, yeah. The, like, full-day kindergarten was brought up, and other topics were brought up?
Those would be in the minutes from the meetings where they were discussed.
At least for me, it might be, because I was under the thought process that I'd see those on here.
Okay, yeah, well, you know, we've done it, we've taken them off as we've scheduled them.
Oh.
But we can maybe create a running log and show that it was discussed.
Thank you, that'd be helpful.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, moving on, new topics. New topics. Were quieter doors over here, maybe?
Later against the, the less new topics.
All right, with that, we have one more item in closed session, so we need a motion to adjourn, open, to go into close.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rich.
I move that we adjourn to closed session.
Thank you, Rich, do I have a second? Thank you, Chad, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passes. Thank you all for coming out, thank you all.
And so everybody knows, the police department was here, they've gone around the building, they've looked in cars, they felt everything was safe. We do have camera footage of someone that banged on the door with their hands, so we'll follow up on that.
Yeah, and thank you all for being calm and allowing us to take the appropriate steps. Have a good night, and thank you, everyone, for coming out.